Good evening. And welcome to the Regular Board Meeting for the Clark County Board of Education. And at this time, I would like to call in for a 6:01 PM. It's Dr. Thomas. Would you help us with the row talk?
Yes, Ms. Williams. Here, Dr. Black.
Here.
Mr. Wirth, here. This table.
Here.
Dr. Mann. Dr. Decker.
Here.
Dr. Nelson. Dr. Adams.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Gaskin will be joining us later, but we will proceed with the agenda as printed. They, uh, would please stand with us for a moment of silent meditation followed by the play of the legions.
Thank you.
Good evening. The United States of America, and to the world, for its strength, foundation, honor, God, and the Bible, the mercy of God.
Good evening. Next on the agenda, we'll have the recognition of awards and achievements.
This table has a Seer Vale who is here. She's not coordinating on giving her presentation. She has presentations for today.
That's not that clear.
Is that better?
That's not clear.
Good evening.
Good evening.
These first awards recognize rising juniors and seniors who are state-level nominees for the Governor's Honors Program or GHP. GHP is a residential summer program for gifted and talented high school students. The program offers instruction that is different from typical high school classroom instruction, and is designed to provide students with enrichment in their area of talent. These students were nominated by one of their teachers who recognized their exceptional abilities. Nominees rose to the top further after rigorous school-level interviews. Last week, they submitted their state-level applications, and we wish them the best and hope they are selected for interviews at the state level. Our nominees are Clementine Atchison in Dance.
I'm sorry. Nominees will accept a certificate of admission for a member of the community.
Tomas Dugan, Visual Arts. Elizabeth Guy, Music. Yada Veder, World Languages. Ireland McCage, Communicative Arts. Loonwig Lekrick, Science. William Harden, Mathematics. Cora Lee Grantham, Social Studies. Orla Crook, Dance. Jackie Wright, Social Studies. Takarius Monford, Social Studies. Brittany Lopez, Communicative Arts. Alexander Holland, Music. Virginia Michael, Mathematics. And Nana Maganda, Music. Our last award is the United States Youth Award, United States Senate Youth Award. This award goes to a high school senior. The program was founded by the US Senate in 1962 to provide an opportunity for talented high school students to deepen their understanding of America's political processes and strengthen their resolve to pursue careers in public service. The awardee was selected based on his commitments to high academic achievement, leadership, and volunteer work in his high school and community. The awardee is an alumnus at GHP, has been the lead prosecution attorney for the Clark Central Mock Trial Team, and plays on the Clark Central Varsity Tennis Team, just to name a few of his accomplishments. He will receive a scholarship award and the opportunity to attend a week-long education program in Washington DC. This award goes to Alexander Robinson.
Let's give all our award recipients another round of applause. Thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate that. Of course, you're welcome to stay with your remainder of the agenda, but if other things call your attention, then this is a good time to take your leave. Next on the agenda, we have either three men and/or a woman to see the agenda. I open the floor for any discussion of amendments. Eric Dunn, gladly entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I approve that you adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Wirth. I approve that, Dr. Wirth. Thank you, Dr. Blackwell. Thank you. Are you ready for the questions, discussions, comments? All in favor of adopting the agenda as opposed to creating angles that's unanimous? Any opposed? All right. We have now come to the public comments part of our meeting tonight. And I know there is a statement that I need to share with us, the public comments of what? And this is from our policy meeting, the line. It says, "All meetings of the Board of Education are open to the public except as stimulated by law. This is the belief of the school board that members of the public should have an opportunity to speak at regular board meetings. Therefore, the agenda for every regularly scheduled board meeting will provide an opportunity for any member of the public to speak. Members of the public who wish to speak at a regular board meeting must contact the superintendent's office no later than 4:00 PM the day of the regular meeting to be placed on the visitors list. To be placed on the visitors list, members of the public must provide their name, place of residence, contact information, and speaking topic. Comments will be limited to three minutes. At this point, remarks must be concluded. No speaker will indulge in personal attacks while speaking. All comments are to be addressed directly to the Board of Education. To protect the privacy of our students, speakers shall refrain from identifying specific students by name. Personal concerns may be, personal concerns may be addressed in writing to the superintendent or president of the Board of Education. Written copies of comments may be provided to the board. At the board meeting, school board members do not respond to questions or comments from the public. The district will respond to the public input as needed or appropriately within ten working days. That said, we have a list of people to speak on different topics. And first on the list will be Mr. Alvin Sheets. He's speaking on the education of children. After him, Mrs. Tommy Farmer will speak on the resource for students. Is Mr. Sheets present? Mrs. Farmer? Is this Tommy Farmer, the resource for students?
Good evening. I'm Mrs. Farmer, a retired educator, and I'm an old black elder who still possesses the physical strength and passion to advocate for the students in this district. Since retiring, I have spent my time tutoring and helping students hoping to close the academic gap as well as the opportunity gap. But I am here this evening to thank Dr. Means and his academic staff for finding solutions to close the gaps. Thank you, Dr. Means and the academic staff, for the Urica math curriculum for the first and second graders. Thank you for introducing Avid to this district. Thank you for the new reading series that will be implemented or have already been implemented. And thank you, Mr. Gaskin, for thinking of our high school students who are reading so far below grade level. Thank you for providing a program for them. Dr. Means, thank you. Start the talk, please. Thank you. Thank you for the Health Center, and I especially thank you for the vision of renovating the West Broad Street School for our students. I have worked with over thirteen superintendents, some African-Americans, some Caucasians, and Italians. And never have I seen a superintendent who is dedicated and committed to the students of the district as Dr. Means and his staff. I could go on and on, but I'll stop because I'm puzzled. When Dr. Means presented to you the wishes of the principal, some of you voted it down. And I'm still puzzled because you have now put Dr. Means on administrative leave when you said that you were if you were pleased with the direction of the school. I'm confused. I leave two questions with you. Why is Dr. Means on administrative leave? And how much is this costing our district and taxpayer? I will also leave with you one of my favorite sayings. The hate you possess for another is the hate that will also destroy you. Thank you.
Kimberly Osborne, support, blessed division. Followed by Leslie Hale, Books for Keeps.
Hi, good evening, board members. Can you hear me okay?
Okay.
And community members as well. I thank you all for being here tonight. My name is Kimberly Osborne. I'm a member of the Athens Anti-Discrimination Movement. Many of you may know us from our program to end the student prison pipeline, as well as our justice initiative initiatives and advocacy for juvenile justice. First, I'd like to thank the members of the board. I don't envy you, your job, or the work that you have left to do. I'm a pretty recent member of this community, but I'm a proud member, especially when I see so many people turning out to advocate for what they believe in. I know you already know this, but I would like to remind us all that we have something in common. We all care very much about our kids. We all care very much about equity, not equality, but equity, so that every child gets what they need individually to succeed. In the grand scheme of their lives, we get such a brief moment of time with them, such a small window of opportunity to enact positive change and plant the seeds that we may never get to see grow. And I fear that we are losing out on that opportunity. When adults fight and disagree, unfortunately, it's the children that suffer. So please, let's remember and what we all have in common. On behalf of the Athens Anti-Discrimination Movement, we'd like to say that we stand with CCSD's children, and we're here today to advocate for our youth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, after Ms. Hale, will be Asha Rodriguez.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, fellow community members. My name is Leslie Hale. I'm the executive director of Books for Keeps. I'm also the mother of a kindergartner in the district. Tonight, I'm here as a reminder and an example of the important work that continues regardless of leadership changes and is a way that the community and the district can invest together in equity. Since 2009, Books for Keeps has been giving books away in Clark County schools. In 2011, we became a registered nonprofit and started following the methods of a peer-reviewed research study that modeled a school-based book giveaway program. This program advanced students' reading scores during the summer with the greatest impacts observed among children from the lowest-income groups. What's more, we have evaluated our program using school district data with the help of the school district and shown that students we serve gained one to two months in reading achievement during the summer as a result of receiving books from Books for Keeps. This year, for the first term, Books for Keeps will be serving every elementary school in Clark County. It means every single elementary school student in grades K through five will get to choose and keep twelve books just before summertime. The books are high interest, and they are purchased by our program based on student feedback from the previous year. We're thrilled to finally be serving Chase and Timothy for the first time, the last two schools to be added in Clark County. It's taken us time to get here because we rely entirely on local funding, community members, many of them parents, small local foundations, and area businesses. We don't receive any funding from the school district, but we would like to be more closely partnered with the district in its strategies to increase literacy rates. Regardless, we already do and will continue to bring resources, volunteers, and thousands of free books into schools. More than a hundred thousand books this spring. The majority of those books break here in Athens. And as a three-person agency, we do need volunteers to help with this, so community members are invited to get involved as a way of contributing to and supporting their local school communities. It's also a lot of fun. We want to do more programming to help build students' love of reading and families' capacity for reading in the home. It is critical work. International, long-term studies have found that the presence of books in the home is one of the single greatest predictors of a student's educational attainment, more important than family income or the parent's education in a lot of studies. In one national study, eighty-six percent of school-aged children indicated that reading was very important for their future, but far fewer said they read for fun. This past fall, when we surveyed children served by Books for Keeps in the spring, eighty-five percent of students were still reading their Books for Keeps books even when the school year had started back. And that was an anonymous survey conducted through their media centers. Kids must read to acquire language, and they need to enjoy reading to become proficient, confident readers. Simply providing access to fun books to kids of all backgrounds is a cornerstone of this effort. In all this, we want to partner more closely with the district, and we hope that the space will be carved out to have these discussions as the district administrative changes come to light. No matter what, we still have students right here, right now, who are counting on us, and I thank you for the opportunity to work with them.
Next, after Ms. Rodriguez is Mr. Katrina Evans.
Hello. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank the board for their leadership and for their appointment of Dr. Thomas. I'd also like to thank Dr. Thomas for her service and commend her and the board for continuing to emphasize equity. I'm really excited to see where her leadership takes the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Evans, and this is programs in District Two. Followed by Ms. Amani Scott Blackwell, purchasing priority and budget.
Thank you, Michael Vice President. My name is Katrina Evans. I am a mother of a middle-schooler, soon-to-be freshman at Clark Central, and an elementary school daughter. I'm appreciative this evening of the three D. At this juncture, I think it's best to press pause on all new consultants and on all new programs. And it's important to explore if we are really evaluating our current programs. What's the effectiveness of Avid, for instance? That program has cost our district a giant sum of money, and it's important to measure the benefit, if any. I'd also like to ask that any program that we adopt or renew be rooted in data. The very likely conclusion to an in-depth evaluation of programs may well be that we need to trade those funds, literally millions, and invest in people, not programs. Even though a program is free, we really know there is no such thing as a free, you know. Regarding District Two, I'm thrilled that we have five brave community members which have applied. I'm especially thrilled that we have Latinx applicants. I'm here tonight to support Ms. Rafaela Delgado Marin. She's a longtime Athenian who knows our district from a Latina perspective, from a hard-working mother's perspective, and knows the challenges placed in front of minorities. Specifically, we need someone at this table which represents and can speak for the thirty-five-hundred Hispanic students in our district. While CCSD is fortunate to have such well-studied board of ed members, many of you have your doctorates, I think that our district can benefit from someone outside academia and outside privilege. Ms. Delgado is also a unique candidate since I don't think she actually has an agenda beyond purely supporting our students. Her motivation is not about supporting or opposing our former superintendent, which could literally be the change we all need. Her voice is necessary, and I'm asking for you to support her this evening. Lastly, I want to take a moment to echo Usha and thank the board for your service. I know that you're facing challenges that you didn't anticipate when you were elected to this office, and I think you're working hard together to speak with one voice and are focusing on the greater good for our students. And Dr. Thomas, you deserve a thank you as well, and I appreciate your service. Thank you.
After Ms. Blackwell, we will have District Two supporters, and the first person will be Reverend Barbara H. Rogers, in support of Mrs. Mary P. Beck.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to thank you all for letting me speak at the Policy Committee meeting today to present around anti-corruption reform policies that we can implement here in Clark County, as well as highlighting the potential for participatory budgeting here in Clark County. And so I wanted to speak a little bit more about that so that the community members as well know about participatory budgeting and what that means and how it can be utilized. And really, just talking about democracy as a concept, I think many of us would admit that it doesn't work and it isn't something that we actually have, that your voice allows you to be able to see material changes in the community that you may or may not feel like you actually see where your money is going and feel like your tax dollars are within the realm of your desires. Participatory budgeting is a program that came out of Porto Alegre, Brazil, actually, and then spread throughout Latin America and now is being utilized in countries all over the world. And mainly, you can see it being utilized in northern cities here in the US. There's nowhere that it's being used in the south yet, so we actually could be the pioneers of that. And some could argue that it might be time for positive press from CCSD. So just to point out that basically participatory budgeting works and that you solicit ideas from the community. Now, where this is different from SPOS and E-SPOS and some of the other ways that we might be told that democracy is accessible for us, you can bring an idea, and there is a team to help you flesh out a proposal. So that already in and of itself makes it that much more accessible for people that do not have the privilege and institutional knowledge to know what sort of things need to be a part of a proposal for it to be viable as something that can be considered. So in having someone help you to flesh out your proposal, we then pose it to the community groups through similar community meetings that we have for anything else. It would just be community members promoting their projects to other community members. We then vote collectively as a community on what projects we want to see funded. And similarly to how voting works and everything else, the most popular projects are then funded, and we see those to be put into place over the next few years. One thing I want to highlight about that also is that it is open to anyone in the community. So this is important to me because of undocumented folks that are unable to vote now. They would be eligible to vote in these sorts of programs because it isn't necessarily a government, like it isn't that sort of election. It's actually just stating what sort of programs you like. So anyone that has been disenfranchised from voting, people with criminal backgrounds that haven't had their voting rights returned to them also would be eligible to vote in these sorts of programs. So it's just something to consider, the way that participatory budgeting can be used here in Clark County. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Kelly, Reverend Barbara Rogers. Then, oh great, thank you, followed by Kelly, Ms. Kelly Bidens, Head of Intuse.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Barbara H. Rogers, and I want to speak on behalf of Mary Beck for and to, first of all, say good evening to the community and to the board, and thank you all for your participation.
The microphone.
Will you put your mic down before we begin?
Sure. Is that better?
Yes, please.
Good. I want to speak on behalf of- I want to speak on behalf of Mary P. Bagby this evening to the board and ask that you consider her, appointing her as the District Two representative on the board. Mary, I first met Mary, I've lived in Athens about five years. I'm a Presbyterian Church USA pastor, I'm retired, I've been here about five years. I met Mary about a year ago at Athens Clark County Library, a program we were both interested in. She introduced me to herself after the program and told me a little bit about her ministry to people in her neighborhood, particularly the children in the area public schools. Mary also has had children and now grandchildren and great-grandchildren in the Athens Clark County schools. I was particularly struck by her passion for the plight of residents of her neighborhood and district who struggled just to get by at times. Some people may characterize Mary as being angry, but when I listen, and I'm also passionate about, I'm trained to listen to the music behind the words, as it were. When I listen to the music behind the words, I hear rather passion for the poor and the downtrodden who are not always heard by the powers that be. Mary also has a passion for justice for these people and after so 40 years of being active on their behalf in the schools, she sometimes does get a little frustrated with the slow pace of perceived progress. And she is not afraid to speak truth to power and I admire her for that. Her neighbors who have children in Athens Clark County schools want the very best for their children. However, these parents often have to work long hours, sometimes out of town, and are not always able to get to the school for parent-teacher meetings or school programs. Mary has taken time over the years to attend awards programs at the schools. She lets neighborhood children receiving awards know that she will be there, that she will be clapping and applauding them even if their parents cannot be there to cheer the women. She's a supporter of the children. Mary has also used her own resources to get books for children. With the help of her grandchildren, she has distributed them to children who may have few or no books at home. Mary also organizes and gets food and clothing donations for an annual Christmas Eve breakfast for homeless persons at City High State Ministries. She's motivated, persistent and she accomplishes a lot. I would really encourage the board to appoint Mary P. Bagby to represent District Two. She has a passion and determination that will serve her district well. Thank you.
Kelly Bivens, we'll hear Ms. Angela Finazzi, if I get my semina correctly, please correct my pronunciation when you wrap.
Dr. Thomas, members of the board, good evening. My name is Kelly Bivens and I'm in my 20th year of teaching and my 18th year in Clark County School District. Six years in elementary, nine years in middle school and three in high school. I currently teach at Cedar Shoals High School. For most of my career in Athens schools, I have taught English to speakers of other languages. These students represent a growing part of our population. I am also a mother of an eighth-grade son in our district. I would like to thank you for this, for your commitment to our community and schools. I really appreciate you. I also appreciate the steps you've taken recently and have faith that you will smooth a wave forward for us. Tonight, I would like to ask you to appoint Rafaela Delgado Marín, District Two, with the Board of Education. She successfully navigated her two daughters through the Eastside Schools and into college and her grandson will soon begin school in our district. I first met Ms. Delgado six years ago when I was a teacher at Coe Middle School and she was a peer volunteer. In particular, she helped me transport students to the University of Georgia Spaling Institute for peer board training. I was impressed by how strongly she advocated for learning opportunities for all students. She fought hard for her daughters to receive a solid education and was always in support of teachers as her daughters progressed from Coe to Cedar Shoals High School. Now, she wants to continue her advocacy covering all children in Athens. Finally, I would like for you to consider selecting Ms. Delgado Marín because she represents a voice that has long been missing from our school board, that of her ever-growing Latino students and families. I give her my highest recommendation and know she would bring good ideas, a fresh perspective in her tireless work ethic as an advocate for public education. Thank you again for your commitment to our community and sincerely appreciate you.
Thank you. And after Ms. Angela Finazzi, we'll have Ms. Janine Mullane. Did I say that correctly?
Finazzi.
Finazzi. Say it again, Lord.
Good evening, my name is Angela Finazzi. I sat up all night conjuring what to say and as a poet, that gives me reason to go into a panic because as a poet, I always have something to say. But nevertheless, I came to the conclusion that it would take more than three minutes to get my endorsement across for little old Mary from the Eastside. See, little old Mary from the Eastside doesn't have any titles or any handles on her name. She's just a passionate woman who stands firmly on what she believes. She's been dedicated to this community and I will not continue to reiterate all the things that she does because it's already been said before. But one thing that nobody knows is that sometimes she goes to the schools. On the first day of school, each child that gets off the bus or entering the school, she will pick a school and give words of encouragement. You're smart, you're great, this is going to be a wonderful year for you. She's always giving words of encouragement to every child that goes into the schools. Now, she didn't have time to campaign for this, going up, making nice little flyers and taking them all around and everything like that because she's been too busy steadfast in doing the work in other community. So I will try to use my three minutes wisely to say that District Two deserves a representative with strength, integrity and the intestinal fortitude to do the right thing in the midst of wrong. Someone who believes in and will work to achieve fairness for the residents and the students in District Two. And trust me, she will not quit. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Janine Mullane here? Oh, great, thank you.
Thank you. Just again, I want to recognize the board and all the hard work that you all are doing and also to Dr. Thomas for sitting in, in our trouble sometime now. And I just wanted to come before the board and the community. I wear a few different hats in the community. I'm a wife, a mother of seven children, five of which has been a part of the CCSD School District. And now, I've also been a school district employee for a couple of years before I got called over to UGA where I've been for about the last five years. So I've seen a lot going on here in the community from all types of level, ground level, a parent level, a teacher level, so I've been in every classroom. I know everything that goes on, I can say it from my own experience, good and bad. But more importantly, as we move forward and as we're considering this District Two seat, with Martin Luther King spirit being amongst us in these days, it's important to reflect that as we look for the best interests of our students, let us not assume because someone represents that particular ethnicity, you know, by skin color or whatever, that that is representing the best interests of all of our students. What we need now, a voice that is not heard. And so I am also pledging my support for Ms. Mary P. Bagby as well. She has a strong passion and I know we are in troublesome in our own individual leadership to allow another voice at the table to be heard, then I'm going to question, you know, where you all really stand. Leadership cannot be moved and our communities cannot be forward if everybody is afraid of being challenged. I have participated in Rock Springs communities with numerous programs and we've also been blocked from doing great programs from our same people of color. So I'm not getting on this, it's all about the black, it's all about the white, it's all about what's right. And when we do what's right, black students, white students, Hispanic students of our community will be served. I am also the proud mother of an Avid student who had Avid before Clark County School District from California, who left as a Rock Springs resident as a Bill Gates scholar. I do know the value of Avid, I saw it, I know what it did for us in California in terms of college readiness. If we had more of our staff prepared on those levels of leadership and organization before they came into our classroom, we wouldn't have had to invest in an outside program. But the investment is good if our staff is not trained. I know what it is because I'm a parent and I will continue to support the direction of Dr. Thomas and we hope that Dr. Means can also come back to the table. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our list of speakers for this evening. Thank you all for your comments. Next on our agenda is item five. This will be the Board of Education reports, starting with Finance Committee.
Yes, Vice President, Finance Committee. We're on into a new calendar year, 40 committees and we have a first finance meeting, 4:30 January 23rd in this building. And the president is always...
Thank you, Mr. Worthy.
Yes, Ms. Bivens.
Next up is the Government Relations Committee.
Yes, thank you. I want to first point out to the board and to the community as well that on the, on the screen here and in your agenda, we have the agenda for our February 10th joint meeting with the Clark County Commissioners. This is our second meeting. We're going to be talking issues of housing, transportation, academic, the academic piece along with job creation and job development. So it's a, it's a very important opportunity for us to get together with our county and really work together to speak to the needs of all our citizens, particularly in terms of our youth and the families from which they come. So hopefully, last time, we missed a couple of board members, all the commissioners were there, but we had a couple of school board members that couldn't make it. Hopefully, we can have the full complement at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I'm sorry, when is the next meeting?
I'm sorry, that's the February 10th is when that is. And it's going to be at Hillman Middle School and the public is always invited because obviously, this is a public meeting, but it starts at 5:30 and go on to 8:00.
Right. Appreciate that. Next up is the Policy Committee report. Did I miss something?
Yeah, I guess that's me again. We just had, unlike the Finance Committee, hadn't met yet, we have met, as a Policy Committee, in fact, we just met prior to this meeting. We did elect officers for this year. I'm the co-chair and Dr. Yeager is the, is the co-chair. We are working on policies that relate directly about graduation and changes and state all that are affected, that affect those graduation requirements and that type of thing. So we had a very good session and we're going to have a very busy year. In our next meeting, we're actually, or kind of feel the need to actually have a special meeting that will be February 27th, excuse me, January 27th at 4:30 for the public, if you so desire. But we need to get these policies in place so that our students and teaching, teachers know what the expectations are towards the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Property Committee.
Yes, we don't have a policy, I mean, a property committee meeting scheduled at this time. I'll be talking to the doctors about that sometime in the future.
All right, item six now, the Board and Community Reports, starting with the Athens Area Community Foundation. Are we still with that representation?
Yes, I mean, I still am with them. And the only thing I have to report is that our next meeting, they have quarterly meetings and the next meeting is on Tuesday, January 28th at 8:30. I'll report in the February.
Thank you. Community Oversight Committees, SPOS report.
Greg and I were there the morning in this building. Alex Sims is the chair of that group. We talked a lot about the purchases for the high school sports facilities. They've met the coaches and the coaches from both high schools have stated their needs and interests and they're working on the track and the renovation of the fields. We also learned that the Clark Middle School is going to meet with the LSGT on the 23rd to discuss the timetable and plans for renovating and or rebuilding Clark Middle. There's a questionnaire from the architects that's going out to the staff and the parents. I guess they have 33 returned, they're looking for more input. And then finally, we talked about West Broad and that evening, on the 14th, we met in this building to start the process of planning for West Broad Street renovations. There was a really nice article in the Herald this morning, Lee did a good job, I thought, of summarizing that meeting. It was the first of multiple meetings discussing what the community wants to see at West Broad. And please come to the next meeting, which will be in February. The plan is going to be that the architects are going to provide planning tools for people to sort of lay out within the constraints and of all the various desires. We have $10 million and Mr. Gilbert said, we have a five-gallon bucket and 10 gallons of stuff we want to put on that property, but the plan is to renovate the building. Linda was there at the meeting, so maybe you want to come and renovate the building, the old building and also put an early learning facility on the site, but it's going to be complicated because of drainage and slope and things like that. So please come to those meetings if you hear about them. We're going to try to do a better job of making them announced publicly. If I could say one more thing, Linda, they really requested that the community provide photographs, anybody who has a yearbook or photographs of children going to that school all the way back, they can use those photographs, even if it's just a tiny little bit of image in the picture with kids of a window or a door or a floor or a ceiling that they can use to renovate that building. So I think, Linda, you said you might be serving as a way for people to send their photos in, or at least you knew how to do that.
Some people definitely would have.
Yeah, we can do that again, too, if you send them to us or just let us know.
That would be great. Thank you. So yes, that was a great meeting and I'm really excited about the progress that we're making. Next.
I have a question. For the Clark Middle, you said they sent out surveys and they're looking for more input. Did they just send them out to current Clark Middle families, do you know?
I believe they reached out to some of the kids that are in the elementary schools that will be moving into Clark Middle, but I don't know how complete that was.
Yeah, because I have a fifth grader who will go to Clark Middle next year and I, we didn't get that, so I wonder if maybe they did make sure that all those families were getting them too.
I'll give it up for you or you can contact Mr. Sims, but I can't do that.
I would call on, you know, call on Mr. Fisher to maybe say a few words about it.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
He has something to say.
So with the Clark Middle, it should have went to the elementary schools, to all the principals, the principal for Clark Middle was sending out that survey, so it should have went to all the middle students that may be going into Clark Middle. So if we didn't get it, we'll go back to him and talk to him about that. Because what we're looking at, we're really going to have third graders hoping that's going to benefit going to Clark Middle and maybe become a... going to Clark Middle and maybe become a fifth grader, maybe a fifth grader, I'm not sure. But it should have went to the...
And any committee that is in the community. All of them. Thank you very much. Excited to see Rick some more over again. Okay, so next up is the Envision Athens. And I did manage to get to the meeting, however, late this morning because of the committee. And I have this poster that kind of highlights what the initiatives were for last year. It's kind of a roadmap leading toward this year. So whoever's going to take my space on that, a lot of changes are happening there. A lot of the initiatives that have already been identified will roll up into priority this year. And what I really enjoyed about the meeting today is there's a very forward movement to make sure that we go back and reengage the same committee that built this overall plan for Envision Athens. So there will be space on the agendas going forward, at least quarterly, I believe, for public input to the Envision Athens initiatives and where we are. So we will have another summit that was extremely successful. It was held here last year where we had each of the 14 initiatives and people working in those initiatives on display and we received updates and also community input on those 14. I don't still remember them all by memory, but the one, of course, that's near and dear to my heart is the Educate Athens Subcommittee or the initiatives there. So great things are still happening in that arena. I also have a report, if anybody's interested in it. And this entire report for last year, 2019, will be on the Envision Athens webpage. So it's going to tell you which initiatives were worked on, how far we've got on those initiatives, and then kind of where we're going in the future with those. So if you recall, this was about 114 things that the community said were important to our quality of life in Athens. They have been split out among the 14 initiatives and they have their rank and we are working on each of those through a prioritizing process so that each community autonomously works on the things that affect them. Education is one, health is one for sure. Some of the bike path thing comes in, so how we move around the city is a big one. So I think there's several others that might be of interest to other people as well. If you're interested in plugging into Envision Athens or the Board member or the community, please go to the website and contact Envision Athens and they will find the space for you to engage. There's always room for more resources. Questions about Envision Athens? Foundation for Excellence in Public Education. We don't have a representative there yet, okay. That was this very early. And next we have Georgia School Course Association. I can speak to the pre-planned workshops that they had this year. I signed up for the legal workshop and it was always beneficial. What's his name, Hartley, is that attorney? Hilton Hartley. It seems like the Johnny Carson of attorneys for the GSBA. But he did a great presentation on Title IX and the implications that it has for how we have the sports and athletics for the girls as well as the boys in our schools. So there might be some policy changes coming for us in that. He also talked about some of the new challenges that we're facing with our social emotional learning and how that's being played out and some legal challenges around the world and what people are doing to try and offset that. So those workshops are very helpful. I thought it was a half day, but it ended up being a full day. So I didn't get to go to the equity workshop that I sat up for. But I'll catch that the next time. Any questions?
I'm going to use this opportunity just to kind of ask a general question. I kind of lost sight of who, what new members are able to make the National School Board Association meeting?
You're talking about?
No, I know, but still, it's related and I'm just fitting in. Great, super, fantastic.
Okay. Absolutely happy to see our Speaker President. Thank you so much for being here. We're down to establish financial report. All right, we have an introduction to be made tonight. We introduced you last time, right?
Yes.
Okay, but tell us again who you are. We're excited that you're here.
Chris Grauner, Chief Financial Officer for the district. Very excited to be here.
Say that again, Chris.
Thank you. Got to go easy on the first meeting, right?
Yes. We're always in the office as long as we have money and the amount.
There you go. We're in good shape there. It's my honor to present the November financial report. You have before you the balance sheet up on the screen now. See our cash balance at the end of November, excuse me, with around $81 million. This is probably the high point of the year. And you know, we receive about 92% of our property taxes right now. So don't be alarmed when that starts going down in the next several months. That's typical this time of year. November is always the high mark for that. Lisa, if you don't mind, scroll down. If you go down to the next page, it's the, you'll see the year-to-date numbers. We won't spend a lot of time on this because when we get into the cash flow, you'll actually see what the projected surplus we're showing for the year. Here you'll be able to see that total revenues, almost $100 million at this point, total spending, about $50 million. Again, that's because of our property taxes. We receive about 92% of our property taxes at this point. So this is typical. What you'll start to see is expenditures will start to exceed the revenues for the rest of the year just because of, just keeping by 50% of our revenue comes from our property taxes. So Lisa, if you don't mind, go get those two performance indicators. Get your apps up there now. Cash position, see last year, about $10 million ahead of last year. Just timing there. I did want to point out on the cash, I mentioned this earlier, about $70 million that I was invested in U.S. Treasuries and Georgia Fund. Earning about 1.65%. What does that translate? Roughly about $900,000 in interest is what we're looking for this year. So again, that's another resource for our total fund, able to put that to use. So that's something we try to do is maximize our cash balance. We have the other $10, $11 million, kind of what they call a compensation balance. So we try to also charge it in our back account. But we all also earn interest on that, it's just kind of a higher rate of interest. Fund balance position, again, get right on with cash. Income, percent collected, a little bit higher than last year, which is good. Expenses paid, a little bit lower than last year, which is also good. All good trends. You'll notice budget versus actual revenue. Budgeted, we were around 22 for this month. And actual, we're about 58. And that's because of the timing of the property taxes. I think we got a lot more payments in October. If you get back and look at October, it's kind of fluid. We got our money earlier this year. Let's get it. I think when Larry put the budget together last year, I think he was anticipating that it would have been a little bit higher.
So are we at, how percentage are we adjourned to that factor?
About 92%.
92%.
Yeah, and what it'll start to do the rest of the year is that it'll start to trickle in. So we'll start to see more and more. Expenditures are actually less than budgeted, so that's a good trend. On the very last graph, right now, we're showing a surplus for the year. Anticipated about $3.7 million. That's good. And again, a lot of that's the tax numbers, about $2 million higher than we anticipated. So that's really good.
That's a good one.
The last slide is probably the most informative. We look at the revenues and expenditures in our 12-month cash flow. Keeping in mind that July through November is actual numbers. December through June is estimated for the rest of the year. Noted a lot of numbers on this page. We get the very last two columns, those are probably the most important. You'll see down at the exit, total revenues were about $2.7 million ahead. Most of that's property taxes. Expenditures, not in the red, but in the black, which is a good thing, were about $1.7 million under spending at this point. That's good. So I bet there are good trends. Remember, we budgeted at depths of about $700,000. We anticipate exceeding that by about $4.3 million, so I guess it's a 3.7% plus we're anticipating. These numbers will fluctuate. You know, the red items in the expenditures, don't be worried about those at this time. Those will kind of fluctuate. Again, we're basing, you know, six months worth of estimations there. So maintenance and operations is always kind of one of those because of repairs and timing. So some of those items like that, I'm sure Mr. Fisher would agree on that, that those numbers will definitely fluctuate throughout the year. So no alarming trends there. That's why I was going to say. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Good service, Dave.
I think it's fantastic that the county government has taken that initiative to attempt through the state legislature and special permission, which they're seeking to lower the tax amount for people who are 150% below the poverty line, you know, to keep those people in their houses. Have you been following that? And have you got some idea of what, you know, what adjustments we would have to make if the county is successful in getting that change through the legislature?
I have not, but I would definitely do some research on that. We can definitely discuss that. I will say we got good news there. I don't know if the governor laid out his additional budget today and continues to float from QB. So that's very good news from the side. Probably three years in a row, which would be really amazing.
And that raises my second question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you just jogged my memory. Also, in terms of, I've heard that the governor is completing his commitment about the $2,000 extra dollars.
Yes, sir.
For teacher who are under the QBE formula. If we could kind of get kind of a ballpark figure, what we would have to pay in addition to that? Because when we meet with our legislators, we do try to point out that not all the teachers are covered by QBE and plus, we have an obligation to our non, to our non-teacher staff to be fair and just with them too. So if we can eventually get some numbers there, and appreciate it.
Yes, sir. We definitely do that.
I didn't have any questions for you, but that question did come up about there will be more discussion certainly around the proposal that the commission is putting together. I've got an email, I just glanced, but we got a mail notification today that I've had. And so if it's misdirected, it's because I told Kevin wrong. So if there's other people that need to be a part of that, I'll let him know. Awesome job, welcome. We're excited about having you here. And so, you know, you have, I need to tell you that the track record for people in your position always great, positive fun and really good.
I understand that.
Not having money left over. And one Finance Committee again this year, so you'll hear me say that every week.
Sounds good. I appreciate it. Thank you all.
Great. We are now, did we cover all the reports? Do we have any add-on reports that need to report? I'm waiting for our president to catch them.
I can, let me...
I'm sorry, I just took a bathroom.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, I mean, it is, I didn't know quite where to share it because it's not really a quality report. But thanks to Dr. Thomas's efforts and getting the word out, we had our District One Town Hall last night at Whit Davis. And it was a listing session. And my wife stayed very busy taking notes of what suggestions were being made in terms of how they're addressed, the equity issues and other concerns that people have in Clark County. We had about 50 people there. We had the President Whit Davis and also Winterville present. We had the Mayor of Winterville. But we had, more importantly, we had teachers. I do have a whole packet of notes and feedback sheets. I've just kind of, because Board members are getting swamped with what to read. So somehow or the other, I have to condense what suggestions were made. But I really do appreciate the people that turned out and...
I didn't know about that. Thank you for sharing. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, for presiding in my absence. So it looks like we're at the place of the Board of Deans with the President's report. Ms. Davis, you already mentioned one of the items that I was planning on mentioning and so did Mr. Davis, and that was the information from Mayor Hertz regarding the efforts for homestead exemption for seniors. And so that is something that I replied back to him and just shared with him. I would share it with the group and then that it seems like it would be something that warranted, you know, more discussion. So perhaps that may be a work session.
Can we just, I did get a chance to speak with him briefly about this. What this really is about is with all of the gentrification happening in our communities, this is a pointed and planned resolution that the commission has put forward to take to our state representatives to allow people that are at what, 150% of the poverty level, to have their taxes frozen. So that if your neighbor puts a magnet next door to you, it does not affect your taxes and your assessment for taxation. And I think that's a great beginning for that. So I hope that there will be more community sessions about it so that we can actually sit down and understand what it's about. Because obviously, when I first heard of it today, I asked a million dollar question. Like, okay, so what if I die? Then what happens to my children? And so those things have been worked out in this resolution. So do look for this resolution and look for more information from your county commissioners about this because it's something that they want to jointly propose and take to the state Capitol so that we can get some legislation around our ability to do that. And I certainly am in favor of that because my community is under siege.
Thank you for that, Rick.
And I was trying to quickly get the date, but that would be a very suitable topic for the February Government Relations Committee meeting.
Okay.
That would be great, but if the community knows more about what that means and what that resolution is about too.
And so we could talk a little bit more regarding, you know, if it's government relations or that and then a work session. I feel like our meetings are a little bit different this month or is it next month? Like with our work sessions? Okay, so it may, depending on timing, we could talk about a little more as far as what we need, what would be the best place to have those conversations. Also, we have, I have reached out to GSBA and asked for them to, asked to confirm the, the 29th. That seemed to be the, out of both of the options, which just seemed to be the best one where at least all of us would be able to be there at some point or another. So if you could go ahead and mark your calendars, we're just waiting to hear back confirmation.
What date is the year? Are you still working?
The 28th and the 29th. And the 28th, we are working with, I think, in the email, it said 5 until 8. And the 29th, which is Saturday from 9:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. And understanding like after that night, one of the things that they shared, Ms. Davis, you can correct me, is that we may end up not needing all, or will need all of that time, but for instance, we may then determine that we may need more. So it just may make sense to sort of stop at a natural point, like at 12:01. But the goal, of course, remains the same. So we just went ahead and blocked out that full time, just in case. I think that is it for my report. We will move on to the election of Board Officers. So at your seats, we should have our, the second balance that we use. And so we'll go ahead and, if you would, go ahead and fill those out. And just as a reminder, we are electing Board Officers for the Office of President as well as the Office of Vice President. And for President, the options are myself as well as Ms. Davis. And then for Vice President, it is Dr. Maddox and Dr. Dugan. I've thought about this for the entire week. And I... I've thought about this for the entire week, um, and I, I am thankful for being nominated and feel, um, I appreciate it. I just, after thinking about it for the week, don't feel like it's something that I can commit to at this time. Thank you. Thank you for letting us know that, Dr. Dykman. And so we have, we have, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Davis.
Do we have control of nominations or just moving back and just go?
I think, well, I think from, I was trying to pull up our, um, the appropriate policy here, I don't see any, um, language, see if I can find it, about like in the, in the event that a person decides not to have their, not to accept the nomination or have you, like what to do in those instances. Um, and so I, I am thinking that we would move forward with the current nominees that are, that are on the ballot.
All right, is that?
Well, before I tell you the wrong answer, let me, let me check, if you don't want to give me a couple of minutes to check our policy and...
That's crazy. I would ask these questions early.
And I, and I do apologize, when it, when it came up last week, it was a surprise to me, and then we just kind of moved on to the next thing and, and then I wasn't sure. So I thought about it and, and I do apologize for not giving, um, more notice.
It was my impression that, that, from my memory, when, when we replaced Jared Mybie, there were two, um, board members that were nominated for president and then for the vote, one withdrew his name. So I think we have, we've had a panel doing that.
Yeah, so if you would take a look, at least from where, what I'm seeing in Mr. Pruitt and Dr. Myatt, please point us in the right direction if I'm not, but I'm looking in, um, Policy BBA, um, where it, you know, it discusses the elections, um, and the nominations. And I don't see any, I don't see any speaking to, um, it goes into the officer duties, but I don't see any, uh, speaking to the situation that we, we have currently. So for instance, I'll, I guess I'll just read what it says with the election, and again, that's under Policy BBA, uh, the presiding officer shall again announce the name of each person nominated for, um, president, and then all nominees shall be submitted for a vote, again, are written, non-secret ballot. Members may, um, vote for themselves, so if they're one of the nominees, I would think that that's what that's referencing. Um, and then it talks about if no member receives a majority of votes on the first round of voting, the two nominees plus the ties received, the most votes shall be submitted to a runoff again. Um, so I don't see...
So we, so it's not a question of policy, we're still agreeing. So we just follow the policy, which is, you can have a motion, we yield a nomination. It's just that, um, we will not be late, there's a motion, it's a, it's a vote, it's a majority vote, it's approved, we yield a nomination.
Thank you.
And based on that announcement, I'd like to make a motion that we reopen the nominations for vice president.
Okay, and from what I understand, we go directly to the floor. Um, so all in favor of opening the nominations or reopening the nominations, if you would show by raising of your hand? Okay. Um, all opposed? All right, okay. Floor is open for nominations.
A nominee, Tish Davis, would you be for it?
Give me a second. Any additional nominations? And from my understanding, Ms. Pruitt, this is not something we necessarily vote on, because we didn't vote on the original nominations, we simply filled it up.
But that's why, just nominations, I'm actually saying, if we have a vote, we'll send that to the board.
Okay, so there are no more nominations, we'll go ahead and close.
Question, are we starting the whole process over? Oh, just, okay, just want to be clear.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so the motion was, um, by Ms. Davis to reopen the nominations for vice president, and it was seconded and then voted on. All right, and so what that is?
We close the nominations.
Okay. All right, we close the nomination, do we have to vote and close of the nominations? Okay, all in favor of closing the nominations? Okay, um, so let me restate then, we have for the office of president, Lakeisha Gant, Linda Davis, and then for the office of vice president...
Sure. So while we're waiting on that tabulation, let me thank the board for supporting me for vice president for the last few years, because it's been my joy to serve you in that capacity. I have no reason to be trying to move on, I appreciate it.
And Ms. Davis, I, I want to say too, regarding your role as vice president, at least, it will, for the last six months, I've been on a very steep, steep, um, learning curve, and I'm not even halfway there, and so I am very appreciative of, um, the support that you provided and the role. I don't think I realized how much I would, I would need it coming in. I knew I didn't know what I was doing, um, but I do, um, thank you for the support you provided.
Your vice president is Dr. Maddox, and your president is Dr. Davis.
That being, thank you for accepting the nomination, um, and I guess, thank you, not I guess, but thank you to the board. Um, I'm continuing to learn and just have a, have a lot still left to learn, but, um, I'm confident as, um, Ms. Davis has provided a good bit of support and she'll go to answer several questions, and, um, I know that there are four of you all that have a good bit of historical knowledge just about, um, the workings of everything, so I do look forward to that support and look forward to working with Dr. Maddox as well as we learn together. Yes, Mr. Worthy.
I want to remind the, uh, board and also our legal counsel, re-electing, uh, Lakeisha Gant for president, that's contrary to our policy. Policy states that you cannot, um, succeed yourself. She's not succeeding herself now. She has served for 12 months for 2020. Now six months into 2021, following the policy, she'll have to step down. Do we understand what I'm saying?
So 2024, I'm going to, it's a two-year term. We have term limits now.
But no, 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 she's already served six months.
That's right.
I've been reading on the...
No, the policy doesn't say that. It's contrary to the policy. The policy says that you cannot succeed yourself, that's the same as you. You have served two years, you have to step down, okay? Now, Lakeisha served all of 2020, six months into, um, 2021, she'll have to step down. That's 24 months.
Well, I'm thinking maybe, uh, it may be a good idea for us to revisit the policy and take a look at it.
And I'm not, I'm not going to, I am not going to allow that to happen, because we cannot rewrite policies to fit the situation. That's not the diplomatic way to do it.
I agree with you, I actually agree that, uh, we don't...
Whatever.
We, we shouldn't write, write policy to fit the situation, but I also understand that there is room for interpretation in that policy. Um, I have read that policy, um, actually a few times, it's one that I've visited before I accepted the interim role. And, uh, Mr. Worthy, I certainly respect your opinion as I respect all of our, uh, my colleagues' opinions, and that's something that we'll look at as a board.
That, that's not in the figure, that's a fact, folks. The policy was changed that you could not succeed yourself, and now we want to stray around that. No, lawfully, we care to do that, that's not the diplomatic way of doing things. Every time something comes up, we'll change the policy to fit the situation, that's not right. And that, and I say it again, that's not the diplomatic way of doing things. And this board will have to cut that out.
Uh, it is, this is something that we talked about when, um, Jared stepped down, and we did talk about whether or not the person who took the role for the remaining six months would be able to run again, and, and that is something that, that, um, was decided that would be possible. And I know that Mr. Pruitt, we talked about that with, with our legal counsel as well. Um, what happens after 24, we can talk about with him again? Do you want to weigh in on that?
Oh, well, I can give you that discussion through the mic, I don't want to weigh in on it. What I recall is there's no small rule, typically specified, math规定的, specified.
What to do if there isn't?
Can I, can I, again, even though, uh, Mr. Worthy said, "Don't, don't revisit the policy, don't, don't, don't read it," I'm going to read it anyway.
I was going to say, don't read it. Rewrite the policy.
Oh, no, oh, no, I'm worried about that. Uh, what it says is at, at the first regular meeting in even numbered calendar year...
Mr. Davis, can you reference your policy?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. BBA, BBA, uh, Description Code, Board Officers. And it is the second sentence in the first paragraph, because it stipulates when we vote. It doesn't say in the middle of the year vote. It says, "At its first regular meeting in even numbered calendar years, the board shall elect by majority vote of its members, a president and a vice president from such nominees." Now, I don't think that in 2021, we can, uh, not have meetings in, in, um, January, February, March, and April, so that we can then elect a president and make, that would not make sense.
Well, you all rewrote the policy, what you need to do is read that last sentence in that policy, succeed yourself. I still don't see that.
So you don't agree with what I just read?
I should read the last sentence or the last few sentences in that policy.
Okay, "In an effort to provide a board member the opportunity to serve, no president or vice president shall serve consecutive terms in the same position." But consecutive terms was interpreted to be, at the time, was to be more than, uh, the, uh, term of the president who had resigned.
So two years, that's why I listed, actually, that, two years.
So, so thank you so much for the, um, you know, the conversation is definitely something for us to think about, something for us to talk about. Um, I do think that this is something that, of course, has implications for policy, um, for our policy committee, um, and if it's something that we need to be clear about as far as like what we mean by terms, um, that may be something that certainly, um, the policy committee, uh, can put that on their agenda, and I think, uh, as with all of us, we serve at the will of the Lord. And so whatever the decision is, I respect the, um, the will of the board. I was just going to clarify, when my position is discussed, I am filling the term of, of the person who I filled their vacancy, that was Jared's term. So if you are filling, I mean, you might think about it, but the term that you were filling was his term as president, and now you are starting your own term. All right, that would be an interesting way to think about it.
No, the policy didn't say that, folks. We didn't talk about this in policy, the policy didn't say that.
Well, it's your...
No.
And so, yeah, we'll, um, take a look at that in policy and move forward accordingly. But until then, um, we have the, the decisions that have been made, um, and we'll move forward with those decisions. Okay, we, we are going to have our introduction of our District Two candidates, and I guess I'll, um, read the names of those candidates, turn the floor over to those candidates. Um, we have Mary Bagby, Aleah Goche, Raffiella Delgado Marin, Giovanna McDavid, and Antoine Stevens. And so if you would be prepared in, in that order to address the board. And I'll read that order, I'll read it again while we are preparing it. Mary Bagby, Aleah Goche, Raffiella Delgado Marin, Giovanna McDavid, and Antoine Stevens.
Good evening to the superintendent, presiding, Dr. Thomas, to the president and the board, to the taxpaying concerned citizens of Athens, Clark County, Georgia. My name is Mary P. Bagby. I can be contacted at marypbagby@gmail.com. I live in, I live in Athens on the east side, 1442 East Broad Street, Athens, Georgia, 30601. My phone number is 7063520244. I am a candidate for District Two. I have here in my hand... I have here in my hand a statement from the board that these are statements for board member qualifications. I'd like to read some of those. It says, "The person must satisfy the requirements of OCGA 20-2-JES-51E, which provides, 'No person shall be eligible for election as a member of the local Board of Education unless he or she.'" These are things that I purpose to abide by. I purpose to follow the protocols and the conduct that is written by our legislators for the board. It says that the person has read and understands the Code of Ethics and the Conflicts of Interest provision applicable to members of the local Board of Education and has agreed to abide by them, has agreed to annually disclose compliance with the State Board of Education's policy on training for members of the local Boards of Education, the Code of Ethics of the local Board of Education, and the Conflicts of Interest provision applicable to members of the local Boards of Education. And if an affidavit is with the officers whom such person has qualified for such election prior to at the time of qualifying, which affidavit shall affirm that he or she meets all of the qualifications required in A and B of the above. And so with that, I'm willing to sit on the Board of Education in Athens Clark County to represent District Two, to follow the protocols, the Code of Ethics, and conduct to adhere by them that have already been written by our legislators at the state. And I'll start with my one minute from February that I did not get a chance to indulge in because of the extenuating circumstances. I had gone shopping, and I found this bag. This bag said, "Clark County School District." And I knew, believed, and felt that God had called me for this position. I purchased this bag in February of 2019. I was overlooked, but my heart did skip a beat for District Two. My heart continued to beat for District Two. I have shown humility toward this board because I did not miss a meeting from February 21st of 2019 until this very day. I've gone to meetings where you've sat in that back room for five hours. One night, you stayed over five hours. I had to leave at a port to be left. I'm committed. I'm dedicated. I'm determined to sit to represent my people, all the people, all the children. We need a voice, and the board has seen my dedication, my determination, my humiliation, and my loyalty to this school system in Athens Clark County. My mother bought me a Girl Scout dress when I was in the third grade for $50 at a thrift store. I wasn't able to go to all of those counties, but I remembered the oath. On my honor, I would do my duty to guard my country, to help other people at all times, and obey the Girl Scout laws. I still have that pledge.
Thank you.
I do honor to everybody, do good to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sonia Goche. Con el aumento de la población latina, me parece que necesitan miembro de consejo educativo que sea bilingüe. Al mismo tiempo, se necesita dedicar muchas horas a esta posición debido a tener muchos compromisos. He decide no ser parte. Yo sé que en el consejo educación se escojará la persona perfecta por este trabajo, alguien que puede mantener la excelencia académica para todos los estudiantes, especialmente los estudiantes negros, hispanos, y las as mixtas. Ellos necesitan un aliado y campeón. My name is Aleah Goche. With the growing Latinx population, it seems to me that a bilingual board member is needed. I have studied the website of the CCSD and realized, given the position, the time required, I'm not the right person. I therefore respectfully withdraw. The children of Athens Clark County deserve a board member that is fully committed to this position. I trust the board will make the right decision, drive to maintain academic excellence for all students, and especially Black and Brown and mixed children who need a champion and an ally. Thank you.
Raffiella Delgado Merron.
My name is Raffiella Delgado. I would like to represent the Secretary of State on the Board of Education. I came to Athens from Mexico 24 years ago, 25, for better opportunity for my family. I helped buy my two daughters to our schools. They are now grown and successful. And so it is now my turn to give back to our community. I'm thankful for the opportunity to bring my voice to the table and represent the diverse community of Athens. Our teachers are hard workers and deserve the children. The children of Athens deserve the best education possible. As a school board representative, I will commit my time, therefore, to give the children of Athens a good and fair education, listen to parents and teachers, and bring the community together. Thank you for everybody. Thank you, everybody, for your attention. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, board members, community leaders, and friends. My name is Giovanna McDavid. I will be a valuable asset to the District Two board member seat. I have, I am passionate about the betterment of Clark County School District. Because I have done my research, I understand the three main responsibilities of a board member. Develop policies and procedures, hire and provide oversight of the superintendent and the school district, oversee the budgets. I must admit, some of these seats' responsibilities will be new to me. However, I am confident I can get the job done. As a product of Clark County Public Education, a high school graduate of Cedar Show's High School, and a former employee of Clark County School District, I have invested interest in the success of Clark County School District in the heart of it. I served as a paraprofessional for over 15 years at Hillsborough Middle School, where I implemented different rules and procedures. As an ISS person, ISS paraprofessional, excuse me, I've seen kids grow. I stood there and seen kids hurt. I watched teachers hurt. I've seen the changes in the community. There, I've seen that our community needs the three Cs of life. The three Cs are choices, chances, and change. Our community need change. We're looking for growth, and as a District Two seat member, that is what I'm looking for.
Antoine Stevens.
Good evening. My name is Antoine Stephens, and I reside at 190 Leanne Drive in northern Athens Clark County. I want to start off today by honoring a former school board member, Vernon Payne, for his many years of service as a neighbor to me, as a mentor as well, to send his family, in my prayers, to his family as he can take this to recover. I am thankful to the elders and youth of this community for seeing me fit to step forward as a part of this, to bring forward unity and tenacity during this trying time at Athens Clark County School Board. I've applied for this seat because I need a person with connection and Native minority representation for District Two that can pull this community together. I believe that comes from seeing a person that has been a proven leader. Elders of this community know me as the grandson of Hetty and Ernest Stephens, and later Hetty Stephens, born and raised on Leanne Drive and steel designer there today. They know me to be a young President Obama in 2008 after school. They know me as the person who picked up and watched over their mailroom newspapers as a little kid for neighbors like Coach Holston, Vernon Payne, and Ruth Hawke Payne. They know me as a young person that's, they had the ground, a mentor into the strong leader I've become today. A strong leader that's led the fight for common sense gun reform and policies in the state of Georgia, working as former chair, spokesperson, spokesperson for March File Action Georgia. The strong leader that took on bullying rural law enforcement agencies in Olkirk and Lumpkin County, Georgia. The strong leader that's organized minority in North Athens and rural counties to stand up for Stacey Abrams in 2018. Elders of this community may come off as strong and tough love, have a lot of tough love, but I know it comes from a deep, deep hearts of love and care, fear for the direction that the next generation of young Black men and women are headed in Athens Clark County. My story is that of a young person that's recently out of the Clark County School District, Cedar Show's High School, class of 2014. I stand here today because I've seen way too many of my friends and family members fall into the school, both the school's prison pipeline and also the grapevine. I have way too many friends and family members who are victims of gun violence in Athens Clark County today. Education can lead the way, and I am here to advocate for equity, not just for equality, keeping our schools and staff as local as possible in a city with no shortage of rising talent. I am thankful for the support of community elders like Attorney John Clark, Attorney Ken Dykes, and my Leanne Drive family, and so many others. I'm here today because I have tried, I have tested, and I am ready to serve to help rebuild the trust of Athens Clark County School Board in District Two. And we will achieve equity together and save the next generation of youth in Athens Clark County. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And so, we heard from all of our candidates, and we have Raffiella Delgado Merron, Giovanna McDavid, Mary Bagby, and Antoine Stevens that are remaining as candidates. As a reminder, when we discussed this process, we did say that we would have, we would have one round of voting. And so, in other words, I think the last time we replaced District Two, we narrowed it down to a couple of candidates and then took the vote. So I just wanted to remind us that that is what we said, and so I'm going to open the floor for the four individuals that are left.
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Worthy.
Madam President, I nominate Mrs. Mary P. Bagby.
So we have a nomination for Ms. Bagby, Dr. Maddox.
Madam President, I nominate Antoine Stevens.
Are we going to second that nomination? Yes, so let's go back and get a second for...
We don't need a second.
No? Okay.
Although we have the legal counsel, but he'll take the same thing.
I am, yes.
When I recall, what the rules say on... I'm going to have my day, so I'm... You sent the votes, the motion to the board, one of these candidates, a second, they'll vote on that, and then we discuss that. If that was a majority vote, it's not, it would not be a motion.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So, let's go back. Mr. Worthy, you want to make your motion? Can you make your motion again?
Yeah, I vote that Mrs. Mary P. Bagby would be one of the candidates.
A second, yes.
Okay.
The only thing I would like to add to the, to offer a discussion is that this is an election to fill a vacated seat. This person, we hope, will also be prepared to run for election in May. So this appointment is until December 30th, but this seat is not for full election in May. And so, we feel the need for this person to think through that, that interesting outcome. So even for the people that don't get elected, this seat is open for election in May.
Any other discussion? Thank you for that information. I just want to clarify, so we have a motion to appoint and then a second, and then we'll vote on that one person? Is that correct? And then, if there's not a majority, then somebody else will make an motion to appoint? Is that correct? And I feel like last time we did this, there were like, there was like a additional nomination? Like we had two people at the same time. Yes, so the last time, if I'm not mistaken, we actually by paper, I think, like narrowed it down to two candidates, and then, from those candidates, we opened up the floor for our board for motions.
You want to check this, like, I'm assuming all of the votes are taken, and they're with them?
Yeah. What's confusing to me is that, I mean, we all have, undoubtedly, we've read the material and thought through it. We have a first, second, and third choice, I think. And I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how in this process, you know, I mean, I may, am I going to lose my second choice or my first choice? I mean, it just doesn't, it doesn't seem very democratic to me. So I, I...
So the process is... Let me make sure, I'm doing it right. We have a nomination, we have a motion and a second to vote for Mary Bagby, right? If we vote for Mary Bagby, the majority votes for Mary Bagby, Mary Bagby wins.
But what I'm saying...
Everybody else...
Okay. Okay. But what I'm saying is, taking your analogy, if, or your example, if, let me finish. If I was, you know, if a candidate was my second choice, and that was the first one nominated, then I'm still waiting on my first choice. So I may vote down a person that I think would be much better, but not number one.
You're not voting, you're voting your first choice. But if it's not as bad, if you're waiting for your first choice to come up, I'm not sure on the same way.
But, but that's my second choice.
There's only one seat.
So one of the, one of the things that we, what I imagine, and again, what Mr. Pruitt says, of course, the process is determined by us. And so, that is something, of course, that, you know, the board can change. One of the areas, I guess, in my mind, is that as candidates are nominated or what have you, if you vote for that person and that person doesn't get the majority, then you sort of know where that person stands, but that's also the space for discussion as well. And so, either way, we get to this point, you know, because even if we, or if we did what we did the last time, at some point, we were going to get down to... what we did the last time, at some point, we were going to get down to, um, multiple candidates. Now, it may not have been four, and so it may have been a little bit easier, but...
See, I was thinking that everyone is nominated because they nominated themselves. So, so we're just, we're basically start voting on, you know, one after the other and, and then take the, take the top, you know, maybe one gets, you know, loses the, is the bottom rung, and so then we down to three.
So the question I have is, are we doing a simple majority? All right, so simple majority. There's seven of us voting, right? So someone has to get four votes to win? Or, help me, we can split this seven among four people and end up with two, two, one, three? I'm sorry, we could be here all night, but this, but let's, let's go do it.
Okay, but what I'm saying...
I think that's the answer to Greg's problem, is if we do two, 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 and nobody comes up with a majority, then we all, we've all said who our first choice is, and then you can make your decision and do it again.
Yeah, what I'm saying is after this vote, we have disqualified, if that person does not get a majority vote, then that's gone.
Yes.
So, so it's who's, who's last may actually benefit.
I think the bottom's ourselves, that's why. So I think, again, we need to look at our process. So I'm afraid, as much as I'm not fond of us going back on the plan, I really think we need to do a ballot, give each second, third choice, and see how we go with it. That's my recommendation.
All right, Ms. Davis and Mr. Davis appear to be, I think, saying the same thing, um, as far as having a ballot. And I'm just going to, you know, keep the floor open. I do want to remind us that we did have a, yeah, we had a, um, a motion, we had a person for that motion, we had a second. But again, if, you know, there legally, you know, we, we have, we determined the process for this and so, you know, want to be sure the floor...
So that's a good reason, I'm ready just to proceed with our previous plan. So I'm happy to amend my motion to suggest that we have a ballot instead. That is a desire to hold. Or, no, just that's a new ballot area. I said, I'm happy to amend my motion to have us go to a ballot if that makes it easier for us to see all candidates and choose among all candidates as opposed to voting individually. We just need to make a decision on how we're going to vote.
It seems like we should still vote for our first choice in the first round of ballots. And how's the vote?
I'll second Linda's motion to, um, to use a ballot and then I think we can talk about how we want to do it.
I'd like to make a statement before that, I was such a two motion, which made, I am totally, totally opposed to ballots, even re-electing the offices. And I'm going to attend policy, to see if we can get rid of these ballots. You know, sometimes I'm for raising your hand so whoever can see who's voting.
I'm also fine with that. I just meant to raise your hand for, for your choice instead of one at a time. But either way, I was trying to make it easier. Not that...
So am I hearing you say perhaps we just call out a list of the candidates and people raise their hands for their first choice? That works for me as well. We just need to agree on some...
All right, so... Mr. Pruitt?
I was just asking if you know where you are?
No, I, I mean, that was a motion for Ms. Bagby, we were in discussion, and then there was a substitute motion for a ballot, um, created.
Okay, I think, I, I think Ms. Davis actually said she would be willing to make a motion, I don't know that she actually made it, so is that correct, Ms. Davis?
That is correct.
Okay, floor. Uh, if the person who made it, so, uh, if the person who made that motion wants to withdraw it, they can do so without consent of the remainder of the board. Uh, if the person who, if there's no consent from the board, then you have a majority vote, uh, withdraw that motion. If the person who made that motion does not want to withdraw, it's already been seconded, you're going to have a vote on it afterwards, or make a substitute motion.
I'm not, I'm not with your motion.
Okay.
All right, so Mr. Worthy does not want to withdraw his motion. Someone wants to make a substitute motion for an altered procedure, then the floor will be open for that. What I suggest is that we each have one vote and that we take a round of voting for each candidate and see what we're at. Is that, I mean, if someone has the majority, then that person is elected. At some point, the person with, with the least number of votes would have to be dropped from the group in the same...
Meaning, Mr. Davis, after that first, after that first round, when you say at some point, what, at what...
After that first round, if there's three, two, and two, then that means that one person did not get any votes. Or if one person gets, has one vote and the others, yeah, I mean, that, there's only so...
Okay, so right now...
Then we have another round of, of voting.
Okay, um, do I hear that as a substitute motion?
Yes, that's a substitute motion.
Okay, so Mr. Davis, you have a substitute, uh, motion on the table to go through and do voting by rounds? Like each person gets one vote per round?
One vote per round.
And after the round?
And the lowest candidate, I mean, the candidate with the lowest votes would therefore be, be dropped when the next round is over.
All right, is there, okay, with that substitute motion, um, is there a second? We're running, do we...
I've got myself confused, okay.
Is there a second, um, indictment? Any discussion on the substitute motion?
And this would again be by show, not by ballot.
I, I, the only thing I'm thinking with, with, um, like the person that has the lowest votes after that first round, I think it ha, it doesn't give us a chance to go through, like, discussions of...
Well, you can discuss after every round. There's, there's no problem with that at all.
Yeah.
I mean, in the, in the motion.
Okay, so we have a, and the discussion points on, um, Mr. Davis's motion to have one, like one round, and the person with the lowest amount of votes drops down. Any other discussion?
That's all I did. No one gets the majority on that first round.
That's right.
Okay, so let me be sure I have the conditions. There is one vote per round. Um, the lowest gets dropped from the list. And of course, the person with the majority will, um, will be the person selected. Am I hearing this correctly? All right, so we got the substitute motion on the table, discussion, any, any other discussion points? If no discussion, we'll vote on that substitute motion and see if it carries. And of course, if it carries, then, um, the original motion will die. All right. All in favor of Mr. Davis's substitute motion? If you would, show your raising of your hands.
Do you have the majority?
Wait, how many? There's a six? Okay, all in favor of the substitute motion? Okay, and then all in favor of, or all opposed, I'm sorry. So that motion carries. What that means is that we will now vote on the candidates. Okay, so we will start with, um, yes, we will start with Mary Bagby. So all of those in favor for Ms. Bagby, if you would, show your raising of your hands.
I've counted three.
Um, all of those, I'm sorry, I'm getting, need to get my list back and I have to order. Where is it?
Okay.
Um, it's right here on the screen. All of those in favor of Giovanna McDavid, if you would, raise your hands. All in favor of Raffiella Delgado-Marin? All of those in favor of Antoine Stephens, if you would, raise your hand. So, um, we have three remaining candidates. We have Mary Bagby, um, Raffiella Delgado-Marin, and Antoine Stephens. Any discussion before we go through and do our... Okay? Okay? All right. All in favor of Mary Bagby, if you would, show your raising of your hands. All of those in favor of Raffiella Delgado-Marin? And those in favor of Antoine Stephens, if you would, raise your hand. Yeah, and this probably would have happened had we even done the original, um, voting. So for any candidate to have a position, it will take a majority. So I'm going to open up the floor for any, any discussion points, any things that people want to highlight.
So my question, and, and again, in this type of voting, and, and I'm just not familiar with this, and I, I want to know, if we have a candidate with three votes and two candidates with two votes each, do we still need to work through this? We have to have the majority, but we got to get somebody to get two to four votes. We only need one person to move forward with us. And we will have, if someone will vote for Ms. Bagby, we will have four votes, or we got to have two people vote for either of the candidates. That's where we are.
Okay, all right, so let's go through another, another round. We, just to clarify, we do need a majority for any candidate to take, um, the position. And so I don't know at what point we get to, um...
We need to, yeah, I want to know how long we do this before we do something different.
Okay, that's a good question.
Well, I mean, what I'm, what I'm thinking is that maybe we ought to discuss it then.
Discuss it. Well, yeah, so, so the floor is open for discussion if there are particular points, um, that individuals want to make.
I would say that I'm very excited to have a candidate who is a parent, a grandparent, and a person who has worked in this community tirelessly for a number of decades, that is willing to sit on this board to represent the community that she serves and has served for a number of years. I think that is admirable and, um, a very respectful thing to do.
Thank you. I think for me, this is an extremely hard choice and, you know, had we done some rank ordering and things like that, probably would have had most of these individuals on there. Particularly, one of the things that I looked at was just sort of that, you know, involvement with the school community as well as being in schools. And so I know that Ms. McDavid is no longer on the list, but those were two things that were really critical for me. But of course, the motion that we had, we, we did get only one vote.
Madam Chair, Lord, one thing that I definitely looked at is, and, and, um, it goes by, you know, transparency, we know Mr. Stephens, I know him, you know, from, uh, from a, a young person in the district, and I believe that one thing that we are missing is having a younger person on the board. That's one of the things that, you know, just being on the board has been, it's been quite interesting, and I've seen some intergenerational types of things that I really feel a person, a younger person would definitely add to this board, having that perspective, being a person who has recently graduated from our district, who's lived, who's lived here. I happen to know his grandparents, I knew his grandmother very well, very committed, and this young man is very committed. This young man has done everything that he said that he did, he, he, he actually did in terms of making this community be, um, better. And I definitely would love to see a younger person, a younger boy, um, on this board, and, um, that's why, you know, definitely supporting Mr. Stephens.
Mr. Davis and then Mr. Worthy?
Well, um, I was, Antoine was my second choice because of the factors that, that you highlighted. I do think that we have 25% of our student body that this board knows relatively little about and the circumstances of that. And so I'm, I'm, you know, maybe now is not the, not the time to, you know, to, to speak out, I mean, to, for that to come forward. But I mean, we do have, you know, people talk about, um, representation, and we talk about, um, making sure there's fairness and equity and, um, while I will move and change my vote next, next go-round for Antoine, saddened that this board is continuing to not have representation for 25% of our population. And, um, I really hope that our candidate, um, Ms. Marion, um, will continue to be involved and, and will continue her efforts as our, as our, our other candidates as well.
I'd like to say that Ms. Delgado was my, my second choice, but, um, it goes to, I do know, um, Mr. Stephens well, I have confidence in him, and one of my own values is that, you know, I thank my parents for bringing me along and passing it upon to me, and I think that this is a value that I would love to see younger people have the same opportunities to, to be in this environment and to share their perspectives. But definitely, it was, it was fairly hard because of her attributes and not just because of the fact that we're minimal, Tina.
I want to say something that's real sensitive. We as a board, we shouldn't be getting into discriminatory kinds of things, ages, etc. That would cause a real problem. And I may go to... That could cause a real problem, and I may blow the whistle on first.
We talk about equity, that's all that we have been talking about.
Let me, I'm going to interject, Ms. Davis, and then Mr. Davis, and then we're going to do a round of voting.
So, again, I'm not going to change my vote, because again, this is almost February. In May, we will have an election for this seat, and I am encouraging all of the people that have expressed an interest to definitely let this be a competition, and let the community put their representative in this place and not allow this board to do that. So I think for nine months, or the 10 months that we have left in this year, we really need to move forward with where we are. And so since you do get elected in May, we're hoping that whoever gets elected, if it's not the incoming, that that person will start working with us in that same month, so that again, by December, we will be ready and more prepared to take your place. The last thing that I want to say is that this is such an important mission for us to do, and yet, I always feel inadequate when something that the people should decide rests in the hands of the board, because we can't help but bring our own biases to the table on that. And so I'm going to ask that we limit our conversation so that we don't get into trouble, and let's complete our vote. We've had the information, we have a huge packet of information. I think that, again, we have awesome candidates from across the board, and in addition to the school board, our LSGTs are hurting for representation too, so I'm hoping that these candidates will also consider that as a stepping stone to this final decision. And that's where you actually have power.
Mr. Davis?
Yeah, I just want to round this out. Mr. Worthy points out, you know, perhaps filing a complaint of some sort.
I didn't say that.
Let's not get upset.
I did not say complaint. I said, let's not get into discriminatory kinds of things.
But what I, I guess what I'm saying to Mr. Worthy is that...
If you'll quote me, you quote me correct.
Okay, I'm going to give this call for... So, Mr. Davis, you, Ms. Worthy, if you would allow Mr. Davis to finish, and then Mr. Worthy, make your comments.
But no one's going to misquote me permanently.
Okay, I understand.
...of being involved in the school system, someone who is, you know, in their 20s will not have that experience. So I don't think that's discriminatory for Lyndon to point that out, that someone has decades of experience in working with our schools and working with our children, just like I don't think it's discriminatory to point to you as a factor in our field.
Mr. Worthy and Ms. Davis?
When you go to the Board of Elections to qualify, to run for the Board of Education, what did it say, age 21? It doesn't say all these other things that have been said at this table today. And we need to leave it at that, in terms of the qualifications. And the qualification was posted on the website. And I still say, do not use discriminatory kinds of things to appoint a person to serve on this board.
I stand corrected if I introduce this to us, because it is not part of what we're doing here, and I would ask that if I do that, if somebody stops me, but if we can place them in our comments to how we break this stalemate that we have on 322, that would be very helpful.
Okay, so we'll go through another round of voting, it sounds like, so we can get updated numbers. Mary Bagby? Giovanna, oh, sorry. Raffiella Delgado-Marin? Antoine Stevens? Dr. Mannes, can you verify our count for us?
Ms. Bagby has three votes, and Mr. Stevens has four votes.
Okay, so that decision is made. Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Stevens will be, has been selected as our District Two. And just gratitude for every single person that got up here. This was not a matter of, like, qualifications, and I'll go back to what Ms. Davis has said. It is such a heavy task to make this decision, because we're not perfect, and all of us bring with us our lived experiences and biases and things of that nature. But I do want to thank every single one of you for your service to our children. I know that Giovanna, you serve as a parent professional, Antoine has served the community, Ms. Bagby has, Aleah has been in our community, as well as Raffiella as well. And I just want to thank you so much for putting your name forward.
I would like to make a motion that in the event that this seat becomes vacant again prior to the election, that we simply by acclamation select Mrs. Bagby to fill that seat until it expires. Yes, we can do anything.
Well, I think, right now, honestly, the most pressing thing for us to do is to go back, and, you know, this has implications for policy, although not law, you know, that we decide on a process, but maybe not even policy, but having an idea, because I would guess that turnover is going to be a part of boards, and we've experienced a good bit of it, but I think that that's where our work is versus nominating any one person to fill the vacancy should something happen, so...
I would just like not to see us repeat this, this is the third time, we've tried to fill this seat. I think by acclamation, we can certainly declare a runner-up if you will, or that large person, that will fill this seat until the term expires. All I'm asking.
Hey, so you have a motion there, is there a second?
My motion is that if something should happen, and Mr. Stevens not complete his term through, what is it, December of 2020, that by acclamation, we declare Mrs. Bagby the winner of this seat, to serve out the term through December of 2020.
Okay, discussion?
Well, the problem might be if somebody else wins in May, in that case, that person comes in.
Right, is so many...
I'll amend my motion.
It's too many considerations outside of our control.
Those are just the two. Otherwise, we'll be back here.
You amend your motion, or you take it back?
No, I amend my motion to say that Miss Bagby serves unless there's a winner declared in the May election, and if that's the case, that person is then invited to come and serve with me.
Okay, and Ms. Worthy, do you still second that motion? Okay, any discussion? Mr. Davis?
Democracy is really a mess. And, okay, and what we just did was an act of democracy, and I'm willing to do it again if we need to. I'm not going to declare anyone three months from now, because the circumstances may have changed. And so I think that that's, you know, why have elections? Why have, I mean, you're right, I don't like this process at all. I'd much rather have it go to the voters. And we got jammed into this, in part, because of the legislation. But I just, I can't imagine us passing something on the basis of, on down the road. I just, that's not how we do it.
Thank you. Any additional discussion points? Okay, all in favor of Ms. Davis's motion, if you would show by raising your hands. Okay, and all opposed? So that motion does not carry. Moving forward. Superintendent's report. Thank you. Okay, our, we're at the place in our agenda for policies, so, no, Dr. Knox is not here. Dr. Myers, is this something that you... It's just really, I think, a recap. And they are being voted for comment, right? Okay, all right. So I'm going to open the floor for a motion for the first policy, BCBG, to go for comment.
I move that Policy BCBG goes up for comment, public comment.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, discussion? Dr. Myers, can you just give us a reminder?
The two policies go together, and they're really solving the dilemma of what is an abstention, further clarifying when board members should abstain from voting, and how that factors in.
Thank you. Any questions for the discussion points? Okay, all in favor of BCBG going up for public comment? Okay, that motion carries. I will take, open the floor for a motion for Policy B.C., which is, goes with the policy before that, but, okay. And, Dr. Myers, you mentioned that these policies really go together.
Right, BCBG clarifies that board members are under strong obligation to vote, and should only abstain when there's a conflict of interest. And then the only change to Policy B.C. is striking the words "members present" about votes of the majority of a quorum, excluding abstentions. So in other words, the way the policy was written previously, if someone abstained, it ostensibly counted as a no vote. And so it's preserving the integrity of an abstention when necessary for a conflict of interest, without having the unintended consequence of counting as a no vote. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I remember us discussing it a good bit in policy, but I know that, I don't think everyone was at that policy meeting, so are there any questions for Dr. Myers, or any clarification? We also discussed this at the work session. Oh, that's right, that's right. Thank you, Dr. Yager, we did discuss it at the work session. My memory is leaving me. All in favor of B.C., Policy B.C. being posted for public comment, if you would show by raising your hands? Okay, so that motion carries. We'll move forward with the policies to be adopted and rescinded. Going to open the floor for a motion first, or we...
I move that we, that we do for adapting or rescind Policy J.S., as well as the Reg J.S. and R.B.S., revise one, rescind the other.
Second. Open up the floor, Dr. Myers, is there any?
Our accounting department actually asked for these revisions to clarify, these are policies about when the district can charge for student fees, fines, and other charges around damage or lost school property. In the interest of clarity, we are asking that the regulation be rescinded, and what we did is we moved the language from the REG into a very short policy. There was no need for both, and I can't explain, it happened years and years ago, why there was a policy and a REG. There's no necessity for that, everything can be answered in one simple policy around student fees, fines, and charges.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, or any, we were receiving a public comment on this?
We did not, we received no public comment on either one, to revise J.S. and to rescind the REG.
Okay, all in favor of these two to be revised and then rescinded, the regulation, if you would, show by raising of your hands. So that motion carries, Policy J.S. has been revised, and the regulation has been rescinded. Okay, moving forward to personnel recommendations, item, excuse me, item 12-1.
Madam President, we make a recommendation that you accept the personnel items that have been presented on the contract list for January 2020.
Okay, thank you. Your recommendation, open the floor for motions. Okay, is there a second? Ms. Worthy, any discussion?
Yeah, I just noticed, Dr. Thomas, that the format, that we've got two lists, actually we've got an addendum as well, but one list, where the format's different, and one of them has more information, you know, we've become accustomed to, the second one does in the first one, so I didn't know if there was a reason for that or not.
For the contract list, we don't give, that's every certified staff member, so there's 1,100 people, plus that. So we don't do bios.
I got you, okay, thank you.
As for next year, that will be offered. Because I think, even if we, you all presented to us maybe a year or so ago, now was the time, actually, when we started getting an idea of like, what contract, who will be, that's right, right. So that comes from, you know, that information.
At this point, they can accept their contract, and I wish, Ms. Duke and her team have been working to make it where principals can begin hiring, we've heard that feedback consistently from the community, wanting to get contracts out early or so that they can begin filling those pages in a timely manner.
Yes, ma'am, in the board update that Dr. Thomas is going to send tomorrow, I'll go ahead and spill the beans, we are planning on sending out contracts next week, we're sending them electronically to cut out some of the time in printing, signing, copying, all that good stuff, so give us some good information, and teachers that are planning on opportunity, go ahead and let us know.
And it's also my understanding that when a contract's offered, it's for a job next year in that, not, in that position, well, in a position, but not necessarily the school or, I mean, there's some...
It's a contract with the school district.
School district.
We try to leave people in the positions that they're at, but sometimes with fluctuations in enrollment, we have to move people around.
Okay.
And then, Dr. Thomas or Ms. Duke, normally, like, so it really isn't until after we get all of that information back, that we realistically understand, like, things like turnover, or like, which schools are going to have vacancies, hiring, and all of those things.
So what we've done, and again, a little bit of this is in that update, we have run enrollment projections for next year, so we know some changes that are going to occur, there are some, because our schools are so small, just a little bit of an enrollment change can necessitate adding or losing of a teacher at a grade level, so we'll know those kind of changes. But again, I remind you that teachers have until June the 15th to break that contract, so even if they sign it now, they could still leave us between now and June 15th without any action against our certificate.
This is sort of a random question, and I think it may be better, like, maybe at a work session, but wanted to just put it on your radar. How common are, like, multi-year contracts with educators, like, within our...
I don't think we're allowed to.
Okay, okay, just curious. I see. Thank you. All right, so we have the...
Oh, I was saying that even though only superintendents get multi-year contracts, they get reviewed every year.
Alright, all in favor of approving the contract list? If you would, show by raising your hand. Item 12-2, the 2020 personnel list?
Yes, Madam President, we make a recommendation that the 2020 personnel list be approved as opposed to any other.
Okay, recommendation has been made, zero motion. Okay, thank you, Ms. Davis. Someone?
Say it.
Okay, and I'm open the floor for any discussions or points of clarification. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
I saw that there was a new position. Is that because enrollment has just got a little bit bigger?
As you can imagine, our alternative school enrollment grows through the course of the year, and so those positions were already budgeted. We were just fiscally responsible in not starting the year with more teachers than students. So we're adding teachers mid-year to meet the needs of the students that are served in the alternative school.
Okay, thank you.
Right, it was just unfilled at the beginning of the year, it's not new.
Are there any other points of clarification?
Yep, there's another new position in terms of Chase Street, in terms of behavioral innovation. So, was that something that was, we just kind of conserve money and then that went down the hiring process?
They, they ended that position with a ton of money, they, so I mean...
Okay, that's a school-based decision.
Yes.
Any other questions? About our personnel list? Okay, all in favor of... All in favor of approving the January 2020 personnel list? If you would, show by raising your hand. That motion carries, right, Ms. Worthing did not vote yet. Okay, moving forward, item 12-3? The addendum?
Madam President, we make a recommendation that the board approve the addition, the personnel list on the addendum for the position of Executive Director of Leadership Development.
Okay, alright, gonna open the floor for motions. Okay, is there a second? Okay, alright, I'm gonna open the floor for discussion.
I can't tell you about this one, and there had some questions, and I did send that out. I think when we were home, Mr. Davis had posed some questions. In addition to the response that I sent, we also worked with Ms. Duke, because there have been concerns about additions in district-level positions. And there have been several changes in titles and shifts in positions, and I'm sure Ms. Duke had the most of positive two for like the last three years.
If, if we can just wait until I finish doing that, I didn't get a chance to finish today. It's not a lot, but I don't wanna say it's two, it'd be three or a one.
Yes ma'am, so this position, as you all know, Dr. Jennifer Scott is our Executive Director of Leadership, as is Ms. Rachel Williams. And prior to the shift in current leadership and interim status, Dr. Means was also supervising our two high schools. And Mr. Gaskins has also been supervising schools. But, and I shared with Charlie, if you all, I think I sent that back, but Mr. Gaskins is over our behavior support for special education, Title I. Curriculum coordinator of special programs, ESOL, urban learning, it's a lot. And what we have found is that in our effort to support students, we're trying to better support teachers, and to do that, we want to better support principals. So, moving to the model, in the past, we did have two executive directors, if you all recall. Ms. Hartman was in one of those positions, as was Dr. Gann for a while, and then her title shifted. So those positions aren't new, it's just how we have attempted to restructure those to ensure that we have direct support for each of our schools. So if we move to the model of having a third executive director, that person will be over our four secondary, I'm sorry, our four middle schools, as well as our three high schools. And then we would hope to have better alignment in our instructional programs between middle and high, someone with more time dedicated to support those middle and high school principals. And I will not be supervising principals in light of continuing some of my job responsibilities as Chief of Staff. But that is already in place prior to me moving to this position. Just the goal is, and I would hope that our principals would feel that they have received a lot more direct support with someone that they can call in the mornings, in the middle of the night, if there's something that happens. They have someone specifically there to help them with crisis-type needs, but more important, someone that's really walking through instructional requirements at the school.
Just one question, thank you for definitely explaining it, I do have some concerns about central staff. I wanted to know, is this, you know, the way we normally operate in terms of, it seems like a position, it's a new position, but it seems like there's already a person in the position. And then, well, I guess I must have missed it, we discussed this before.
So, the way our policy is written, when a new job description is created at the administrative level is to be brought to you. This isn't a new job description, it's an additional position. And I have no problem prior to advertising those positions when we're adding one, to bring that to you. That's just not a practice that we have under Dr. Means. And it's, it doesn't bother me one way or the other, if it will fully, the hesitation we're having now, after we have interviewed, fingerprinted, all that good stuff, this candidate, then I would be glad to do that.
So if this is same, as it's the same position as Dr. Scott and Dr. Williams, it's just an additional person to take their load from about 10 schools.
I don't have a problem with that. I hear what you're saying. I asked myself that. It's like we start adding all these positions and then I come back and you're like, wait, what's going on? I thought, just to keep track of this.
Yes ma'am, I totally get it.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think, I agree with you. I mean, I think if we could go back to how we used to do it in that sense, because that way we can digest it and not just look at it.
Okay, no problem.
And we had discussed that as a, as a team and recognized that's...
That's the issue with some of the hays. And I would, I agree with everything that everybody said, and just wanted to say that I would appreciate that as well, because I don't wanna get to this point where we don't approve a person, because it's not about, it's not about the person. So, having some prior knowledge about the position, so that that could happen on that end, before you go through the process.
Right, well, it harms our reputation as well, and so we don't wanna scare only good candidates, because we're getting to this point and not approving them. So we wanted anything I could do to help avoid that, it's not a problem.
Is there any way, like, not tomorrow, like, so not with this other, you know, with the other updates? But, I know, like, in our conversations and things like that, there, there is some concern. Is there any way to get, like, the historical impression, so for instance, the organizational chart over the past several years, as it has shifted? And I ask that because, one, so we can be better informed, but I also know that oftentimes, there's a whole lot of misinformation, right? And so people, you know, people, they believe something and then they start gathering information for it. And so I just want us as a board to be prepared to have the information as it exists. But I also think it's important, too, you know, when we start, you know, wondering, like, okay, is this an increase, is it a decrease? To have some historical data, as far as what has happened.
That's what I'm doing, our org chart changes so much, it's really hard to look at it from year to year and see what the change is. So the chart that I'm creating for you guys is, this is what the title was, this is the person that was in it, this is the new title, the person that was in it. Or the new title, and no one was in it, it's a new position. So that's kind of what I'm laying out for you.
And as we worked on that today, there were positions and people we had forgotten, you know, you were working on.
In my mind, I'm like, a lot of people thought, oh, we added those two positions, I'm like, I don't know. We did, they were created from these decisions that we eliminated, so.
Yeah, and I will say, I think it's a, I think it's a solid decision, particularly with where we are. You know, to sort of have a level of separation between that person who's overseeing everything, you know, and, yeah, we expect a lot of teachers, and, but they can't do what we expect them to. They have strong leaders, and strong, you know, so I do, you know, having not been a district leader, but having sort of worked and tried to interface with all of those individuals, do recognize the importance of having someone at the district level that can offer the right type of support.
Thank you. Maybe we'll get that back to you, she started today.
Other comments or questions?
I really want us to have some more conversation about that, in terms of utility of that, and how we're gonna use the information.
The, the organizational...
Maybe having a subject for our work session, because it's, it just feels a little bit below that level, and that's just my personal experience.
Yeah, I can understand that, I also think as we're coming up on, I mean, we're sort of, not behind, but we wanted to be at a different place with, like, budgeting and revisiting strategic planning. And so I really do think it's timely as we are discussing those things, because that information goes into the three areas that are within our purview. And, you know, with the budget being one of them, but I certainly can hear those concerns as well.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my fear, is that again, as we get more granular in terms of who's doing what, and we kind of moved over into that space, now we're getting into operation. I think our, our rules is the budget will be this, and then how that person who's trying to run the district makes those decisions, kind of their thing to do. So that, that's my only concern, I don't want us to get so much information that we can actually have to slip into something that we probably don't want to do.
Sure, Mr. Davis?
Yes, Lynn just sparked something that I was, wanted to bring up. If, Lynn, not to make more work on you, but, you know, if we had some coding system in terms of funding source, because, you know, we just voted to, to, to move from, you know, take, take money from the general fund into Title I last month. And some of that, my understanding was because of how we are funding some, I'm not saying that's the only reason, but some of the positions in this office, in the central office. So if we knew the funding source, so we can kind of track Title I versus general revenue.
Yes ma'am, that org chart that I sent y'all last week, it had the funding source on it. And this one, just for your references, general fund.
Oh, okay. So, so, but then with this chart, the title of fund...
Exeror District Office Administrator, that's what I feel like is the rub.
Okay, all in, any other questions? All in favor, I'm sorry, all in favor of approving the addendum to the personnel list? If you would, show by raising your hand. Okay, and one not voting, so that motion carries. Okay, we're at our consent agenda items, we have all of those that you see, that we have, we're aware of, that we discussed as well, or looked, have read and looked through at, at our work session. And I'll open the floor for a motion. I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second motion.
Okay, seeing as there are no discussion or any minor corrections, we'll take a vote. All of those in favor of approving the consent agenda, if you would, show by raising your hand. Is it all in favor? Okay, alright, okay. And, moving forward, other action items? We have our action to approve the crisis alert staff. I'm sorry, the crisis alert system.
Statistic.
Thank you. And, open the floor for a motion.
I move that we approve the statistic work staff system, crisis alert system.
Second.
Second, open the floor for questions and discussion.
Yes, well, our work session, I think we were, we ended up just talking about the legality, you know, I mean, there was some legal issues, lawsuit, things like that. In terms of, of a whole lot, this is kind of new technology, right? Right, Mr. Fisher, so it's not, not too many companies doing, doing this besides the ones that we talked about at the last work session?
It's probably about three or four companies in the state that are probably doing this.
Is this, is this style, the, I mean, they must have different styles then, I'm assuming, different, different ways they hang, or maybe, maybe it's like a wristwatch?
Well, some systems, it can hardline, some is wireless, the system we selected is wireless.
Okay, so that's one big difference between some of those other companies?
Yes.
Other questions?
I will say, you know, with our own attorney speaking about the legalities of, you know, the lawsuits, I mean, I'm kind of leery about voting on that. I don't know which, I just don't know enough about it to, to vote.
I asked a question, what, what is your concern?
The fact that our attorney, you know, had concerns that, you know, they're in a lawsuit right now, that was, you know, that for me is...
But the lawsuit is between two companies, and that lawsuit that was at the Star County School District. If that would happen between those two companies, almost that would happen to us, you know, we're doing, they can, if your, if your concern is that they can come back and sue the school district, that's not a concern. And Mike, you correct me on, on, right or wrong there.
Yeah, that's a good, you go, the fact that our own attorney brought it up, that concerns me.
We have a brother, that other company here, from, if I'm in order, y'all want to hear from him?
I would love it.
And can you remind me, I know he discusses how long this will be for, so the action, if it's approved?
It's three years.
Three years, right, so that means it'll be up basically for renewal or a new decision in three years?
Yes, yes.
And potentially a new funding source in three years, but still, this...
And keep in mind, we're getting our funding from the governor, so we're not using any general funds to fund this project, so it's kind of straight from the governor's office. But like I said, President, Mr. Brent, God is here, if you want to hear from him.
Yeah, I'm not sure, the board, we're happy to answer the question you guys may have, and our general counsel, the business section, is approved, I'd answer the question.
Well, from your perspective, what, what is going on? I think, I think if we need an update, would be helpful.
Can you hear him? Okay, so, the, there is no claim about intellectual property between Alert Point, which is the other company, and Third to Four Ed, which is Statistics, doing business, that's Statistics. So the clarification is that there is no claim against us for the intellectual property. There is with a third-party company, Room Pro, so we're not partying to that. Well, we're partying to claim that that claim is not against Third to Four Ed. Now, the thing that I think we should clarify is that our contract with you would completely indemnify you against third-party claims, so that really removes the risk to the district. Our general counsel discussed that, Mr. Prudin, happy to, to open up for, for the discussion on that topic. Since my name is Mary Booth, and I just talked about those?
Yes.
Please. Please.
So, um, the other counsel called me yesterday, um, what he told me was that it was only about plate lines. So I pointed out to, 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 where you can count the claim. Basically, one of, one of the prayers for the deal that we're going to make is that it had a fair portion of income in certain technology, not just plate line, software, hardware, and solar, and room. And I think what you really did in that was Statistics is a position that maybe not all of it acquired self-financing. It was just a speed up to owns that acquired technology. They didn't use it in that, in what they, the system they developed in the 70s. Which I don't know what worked in that position. And indemnity is only as good as it should be indemnified. I can give you an indemnity for, if any of y'all are talking about, I'm here for that. So, um, I asked the counsel to call me about the jury, and I'm not surprised. Well, wait, will that one might come along?
Yes, it's the same.
So, um, uh, apparently assurance is not possible. And I think Mr. Fisher was calling the same thing.
Thank you. Other questions? I have a question. So is the concern that if something happens with the lawsuit, that we would be somehow liable? Or is the concern that we would have bought a product that may no longer be supported?
I think the more realistic concern is the latter. That if, if, if Statistics comes out the loser on some of all of these claims, there's a possibility that it would just no longer exist, would be useless.
Unless we pay the lead person something to keep it, so they would, that's a risk number for sure. That way no longer the loser company, they can salvage it.
So, sorry about that.
Sorry about that. So one of the things that we had offered to the district was instead of encumbering the funds for the full three years, if that were a concern, that we could just move that to more of a monthly, so you would only be paying, um, as it was being used. So that's something certainly can offer the district, um, to accommodate that, that potential, if it existed.
That's a great question.
Yeah, I like that.
Can you say that, can you say that again, so I can be sure?
Yeah, so one of the things that we can do is to eliminate the issue that the money is basically accounted for upfront, is that we can just bill the, the district monthly as it is being used. And therefore, you would still have the, the opportunity, whether that's an escrow account or some other, you know, capability or capacity. So you're only paying it as it's used. And if there was some issue and you need to do something differently, then, uh, then you could agree with the comment made earlier that it's a great county, anyone's going to want to work with it. Um, so, but we can afford that to you as, as an option to eliminate that risk.
If we do that, like, the money that has to be spent by when June...
This is a question I just rolled back to ask.
So then, do we like, is this like a test, three or four months of May, we just go ahead and enter until, like...
I just rolled back and asked Chris, who could happen to ask the governor's office how that would work because those funds were allocated by the governor's office and designated for that purpose with the deadline for expenditures. So that was exactly what I was asking about.
Yeah, my concern would be it's reimbursable. Like, we have to spend the money and ask for reimbursement from the governor's office. Like, we haven't been given the fund yet. So they just went out for three years. I'm not so sure the governor's office is going to want to reimburse us for three years. But, but we could definitely get an answer to that. I mean, I have a, a good contact state that we can reach out to when that, we were looking at it previous district. So, uh, uh, that's my only concern is that money wouldn't, that scares me a little bit because of this reimbursement.
And, and I guess, like, with, I'm, I'm, I actually think it's a, it's a great amount of security. But then it seems that there is a possibility for that to fall victim to other decisions, political, you know, beyond us, because I don't know where the, if they said that we need to spend this money by this time, you know, and...
Just to number the funds and then apply them through the escrow money. That way it's spent and committed, and then you could change the direction. But I don't think that we thought that's a way to accomplish it.
On what I want is that.
One comment here.
Yes.
Has been, my experience with money like that, appropriate it, you use it, or you want to lose it. We don't need to fool around with that. And also looking at this alert system and what's going on around the country, et cetera, is the risk not to do this. I, I mean, obviously, we have to do something. Uh, we need some product. I mean, the question is, is that if, if our CFO can, can work it out so that we have spent the money, but we haven't, um, you know, I mean, I, I would certainly want to investigate that. Because, you know, I don't want to also not, you know, end up in a situation where we were given money to protect our students and, and then end up not ending up with nothing. So, I mean, that's, that's a fear I've got. I mean, we've got, the choices, apparently our choices to go hardwire. So there is, there is another option out there. It's just not, is not what we want.
I would not suggest hardwire because it would have, first of all, it'd take too long to fit all our school软. And secondly, same thing, if we had to change technology, then you got to pull out the hardware. With a wireless system, that's not the case.
Yeah.
One other thing I just want to add, our surrounding districts around us have already implemented the system.
Yeah, I, um, whatever the little board is, I want to, you know, take action. I know that there is a lot of, um, you know, legitimate concerns around school safety. And, you know, we're all schools are safe places until they're not, right? Until the, you know, issue happens. And so, you know, if, I don't know how the board will vote, but, you know, I do hope it's something that we can make a decision on sooner rather than later. Um, so that in the event, you know, that something does happen, we're prepared.
Can I, can I just make an amendment to the motion? And that would involve the CFO seeing what he can do for us in terms of the, of the governor's office and, and, or the escrow, um, monies to at least make an effort to, to try to have our cake and eat it too?
And so to be clear, your original motion, and, and we were discussing this, to be clear, what I hear you saying is you still have a motion to approve, but you want to add to that...
Yeah, it's a friendly motion.
That we do what we can to...
Yeah. Give this, empower the CFO to do what he can, and, you know, if he can, he can, but at least make that effort.
Would you do that effort to minimize risk? Because if that's what we're doing, I'm, I'm going to do that. But I don't want a motion going out, I have a cake and eat it too.
No, it's not.
It's not acceptable.
My, my, my motion is not about cake.
Okay, just a check.
Okay, so I hear the amendment is empower the CEO to do what he can to, like, really minimize that risk associated with that. Okay? Any other, so that motion, I amended that motion. Does it, yeah, I don't know. No. Okay. Any other, any discussion to the amended moment? Not the motion, the amended motion? Uh, motion? Okay, so the motion carried to approve the Statistics Crisis Alert System, um, while also empower the CFO to find out as much information as he can to minimize risk. Thank you. Action to approve, we're on item 14-2. The action to approve our annual school resource officer. I'm going to open the floor for the motion, or motions first.
I believe that the, uh, the, uh, I have a motion to, to, to the school resource officers.
Okay, is there a second? Second. Okay. Open up the floor for a discussion. Any questions? Mr. Davis?
Yeah, um, I've got like three, three, three questions, I think. I've, one is, is that, you know, this, I'm prefacing this by, I know, I mean, my impression was, and I'm not sure where I got it, but I, there was some discussion that took place somewhere last year about perhaps bringing all, um, law enforcement into, um, uh, SROs and, and to no longer continue that contract. So I, I would like to know what the leadership's thinking is right now in terms of that discussion.
Initially, Dr. Means had began to explore that as a possibility with our police department, the Clark County District Police Department. However, the cost for us to work with Athens Clark County is approximately 325,000 dollars to have six resource officers, six certified officers that we need. For us to hire and equip those same six officers would cost us a little over 750,000 dollars. So out of fiduciary responsibility and trying to be good stewards of our funds and where we are right now with budgeting, we did not feel that this was the time to make the move to break all of those services in-house. In addition to the cost, whenever an officer is out, ACCPD sends us a substitute officer at no charge. For us, when we take that on ourselves, if there's Officer Hill, that's a gap we have. And we would also still have to find resources to have someone, you know, whether it be with the boss or some other private company, that would be an additional expense for us. So looking at those two areas was what led to the decision to wait. And ideally, that's something we would still like to consider. Um, Mr. Fisher has been talking with Chief Spruill, has, has Chief Sizemore, Assistant Chief Reed. And ideally, this is something we would like to look to and maybe eventually start slowly replacing those officers. But the cost is over twice as much, as you said.
So where that came up, Greg, was with the budget, um, the budget discussions last year and the addition of an assistant police chief in the district, right? So, um, one of the things that we were told was that with the addition of this person in-house, then we would have, and, and it wouldn't happen fully, but that we would have less reliance on the outside agreement with, with the ACC police. Um, so I guess, kind of piggybacking on Greg's question, now we have another person in CCSD, um, but we still, do we still have the same number of ACC officers? So are we now actually up a person, or how do we need all those people? So how is that?
Chief Sizemore's here. He can speak to that and also speak to the additional support we've tried to provide to our elementary schools as well.
Yeah, and we do have one additional person with that. And that person is actually a vacancy right now. But it's, so that hasn't been hired. But we are expanding our role in the district from just the high schools and the middle schools and trying to do more in the elementary schools. I think it's really important that we begin developing relationships with these kids at a much younger age and not waiting until they're, until they're old, uh, or old, whatever they admit as good as, we kind of start early. And, uh, we've had some success with that. We're going to give to the kids. And, uh, we try to make it to every elementary school, each, and check the doors you can go through and, and...
So that's not so much from a disciplinary and working community-oriented police and type model that I know of?
Insight. I mean, I think the presence of each elementary school little police officer. Uh, and, you know, we have, they ask us, what do we do? We, we engage a conversation and start talking to them about it. And, and, you know, it usually turns out very well. That's, that's one of my favorite things.
Have we, and, and I know that this is not the easiest thing to track. It's not like desk boards. But in terms of, do, do the SROs and, um, Athens Clark police officers that are in our schools, do we keep track of like incident, incident reports? Do we, do we have a sense of, um, in terms of, how, how do you classify negative engagement? I don't know. But, you know, I'm, I'm sure that, that there are, um, in law enforcement, there are opportunities when, when there's a positive engagement and it goes well, and sometimes it doesn't go well. And I know that we typically look at the, with the person who is doing something that they're not supposed to do, you know, acting badly versus acting appropriately. Um, but it's two ways straight. I mean, and we only, we're only human beings. And so I'm trying to, um, you know, I know we had a couple of instances last year that kind of got into the news and, um, I think it was last year, maybe the year before. But I, I do know that there were, there were issues with the, with, you know, there were videos and all this kind of thing. And not, you know, not being there, I don't know what, I don't know what happened. But do we have some type of statistics that we're keeping in terms of, of, where we can even measure the impact of SROs versus, um, the Athens Clark police officers and effectiveness?
I would like for us to, I think we're, if we could look at that from that standpoint again, why we thought we would, we wanted to, uh, what was it? I think our fear was, we had that agreement with the police department that those guys are trained to be police people, that they work in the community. They want more attention to our kids. And so we were trying to build from inside that solid thing. But that's what I thought this initiative was about, 14-2, is to continue that agreement with, the, I would think, to what, how we're interacting with them. But that's probably going to be someplace else, maybe in our strategic plan or in our agreement with them or MOU or something. In terms of the data that, that I'm hearing you pass for, is that not one of our measurements in our strategic plan already, or is it something that we could add there? Because I'd really like for us to vote on this particular item and then get to this next one.
I don't, you mean like the number of incidents with...
We get those reports, we have federal reports on that. And so I know that we have these. Is there something missing in those reports? Because I'm just trying to understand what you're asking.
I don't think that, I don't think that we're specifying SROs versus Athens, you know...
So that would be modifications to the report?
Yeah, I mean, in other words, right, right.
Whether we approve this or not, so we're ready to, okay. I just thought I missed something.
I mean, in all fairness, we haven't, we talk about the contract.
Let's make, let's make it...
Well, yeah, but we got a lot of things on the, on the plate. So if I can get some information now, if, if Chief Sizemore has some impression of that or, or if there's something out there from the superintendent, I, you know, I'd love to hear it. Maybe there's not.
I would not phrase it as ACC versus CCSD really worth as a partnership. Um, a lot of times, things happen. I mean, the schools and the community are not two separate things. A lot of things happen in the night after hours on the telephone calls. Many times, I've been able to help them with information out of the schools to, to help the child stay safe. The same, when they get information, it could impact the school. They called me at night, and we're, we're ready for that tomorrow, I would, we work together. Uh, it's for what they do, absolutely. And I get a report from each of those, um, SROs from ACCPD. They email a report to me as well as their supervisor each week detailing what they do. And I keep track of the actual incident reports that they take. Now, positive encounters versus negative encounters, that, that's a little difficult if it doesn't wind up on this report or in their email report to me. But, but yes, I do capture that. And, um, does that help? And we also train some together. We took, I know Dr. Gant came to a portion of it. We took a policing, the team, brain force together. Uh, there, there's lots of training we do together. And I would also say that the, they don't just send us somebody up. That there's a selection process, and we try to pick people. And, and I was on the other side of that. I was responsible for that doing, when I worked at ACCPD, so it's good to, for, uh, ways back. We want to pick people. We want to pick people who are suited for this job because it's beautiful.
I think our schools are ensuring that the officers that aren't there. I know we've had some vacancies, we've had some substitutes. And I've heard from building deals adamantly that some of those people who substituted, that wanted to apply for permanent jobs not be in that position because they don't understand that whole concept of policing young adults. And so the effort is there to make sure that there's a good match and that there's someone who does not come in with no offense to, but that a street policing mentality inside of our schools. So, and we do capture data, Mr. Davis. We, we're meeting every month on something Dr. Means had worked on where we had almost like briefing, the CompStat meetings? Every week, I'm sorry, not every month. We had CompStat meetings every week where Chief does keep up with that data on what kinds of activities the police are involved in. If there are police on our campuses, but for things that may not have anything to really do with our schools. If the police are called to the schools, is it because of an incident in the school? Is it a family incident that's spilled over to the school? Was it a, police were, sometimes were, you know, in pursuit of someone and they end up stopping in our parking lot. That comes up on the report as on our campus. So we even, Chief Seidmore even drills down to that level to see if they are there, was it something that originated at the school? Was it something from the community that ended up on our campus? So we do have that data where he looks at the types of activities that our SROs engage in daily, or weekly.
As a part of that, I'm wondering, like at some point, I know we don't, our next, we don't have a work session coming up, but is there any way that at some point, as we're planning for the future, that we could, you know, have that as a part of our work session?
Give a presentation on that and provide a summary of that data? Like look at the school year or like the first semester of year?
With the resource, what with the officers, that the six officers here, what's your general idea of like how often officers outside of the district, so these officers are involved in like restraint, seclusion or restraint?
I'm sorry?
So like, sometimes like in high schools, you know, officers find themselves in situations where they may have to be involved with maintaining safety, breaking a fight or what have you. I'm curious about the officers that we're talking about, the six that are not employees. What have you been able to tell, like when you're looking at that data? Are they involved in seclusion restraint instances often? Or have we, I know it's much easier also probably to track our, our own employees as well since there's typically a process for it.
I actually look at all of the reports that are generated. So both ACCPD, SROs as well as our own officers, a lot of times it's going to be, if we have a middle school, it's going to be the SRO that's assigned there from ACCPD. In high schools, we've got one from our agency and more information. So ACCPD, so we do have the closest of both that get there and restrain, or normally it's regular, it's a regular notification.
I think part of that, Dr. Thomas would be in terms of that presentation. To me, there's a larger question. I know Chief Seidmore and I were both on a panel with Moms Against Violence, you know, and, and... So I said something there that Chief Seidmore and I never, I never had a chance to really get his opinion on. But we've got, there's, there's, from my Google research, whoever that's worth, 29% of our high schools don't have armed officers in them. And I know that sounds like blasphemy. But, you know, and, and I'm certainly not advocating that, but it's, it did give me pause to thought. And I know we're straddling between restorative justice practices that we really have bought in as a district. I mean, some schools have, but we really have not bought into it and as a district. I mean, we're not going full steam ahead. We are going full steam ahead in terms of having armed officers in our schools. And I, I look at those as not, as not opposites, but then, but in a way, it does give me pause. And like, for instance, I wonder if officers have been through restorative justice practices? If they've been included with those schools who have incorporated restorative practices? If they've actually been able to, to, you know, bring the officers on board with that? So it is, it's, it's just some, I think there's a lot, there's a lot of meat on the bone that, that, not tonight, obviously, but I just, I raise that just in terms of, of if, you know, when you make a presentation, maybe you can throw in, you know, the idea of restorative justice practices and the advantages of armed versus unarmed. And again, when I mean armed, I'm talking about visibly armed. I mean, I'm sure there always will be folks in our major schools who have access to weapons in case of a outside shooter or something like that, or, you know, so anyway.
Yes, sir, and I've made notes on that, we will include that in an upcoming work session.
Chiefs, or Officer Reer, can I just, was that? Any other questions or? So all in favor of the action to approve the annual school resource officer contract for the 2020, 2021 school year? If you wish, or raising your hand? Okay, that motion carries. And we have item 14-3, which is our last item. I'm going to open the floor for motions.
I'm going to approve the contract to purchase the licenses for grades five through six and 11 through 12.
So, okay, okay. Floor is open for any questions? Yeah, I'll just comment that we talked about this briefly at the COC's field office meeting and it's been a received COC approved, or not approved, I think, but we discussed it. Okay, other questions? I have a quick question. I know that, I couldn't find it, but I know it was in one of our, at one of our meetings where we voted on technology and it was a part of consent at that time. What was the, was that like an upgrading?
Mr. Duke, that was, I think, was it our, I think it was the board meeting when you did that presentation, so. The little chunk of grade did not ever... And then he said at that time that we would have to come back for the other, the remainder of them to be upgraded, yes. So that's what it was, we just only get a portion of it. And the funds are already allocated before they, through our expenses.
So these are all replacements through the IT plan? If there isn't a schedule, replacement cycle scheduled? This is from that one?
And as, as grades five and six and eleven.
We got some concerns, you know?
I guess some of the, I get, you know, I think there were the concerns I had at the time, but it was with consent item that there was a conflict of interest, so I didn't vote on that one. But, you know, of course, we want to hear what teachers feel that they need, right? You can't just stop updating technology. But I guess wanting to understand in general, like how we are moving for, you know, like what's our vision for technology, you know? And, you know, as a, not just a parent, but a representative, I know, I've, you know, heard just, you know, like concerns and not just them, but from being in schools, you know, it's such a delicate balance.
That's what I was about to say, really working, and we talked a little about this the last time, really moving to a blended, more of a blended model. And we have strongly moved away from digital resource only and the model of laptops always have to be out and they always have to be open. There's a place for textbooks, there's a place for direct instruction, there's a place for digital tools. And our teachers have been given that, that autonomy in deciding when or what instructional tool is best a part of their, of their day where they're instructing with students. And that is a shift from where we had been eight to years ago, really allowing teachers to make that decision and working to make sure we have a variety of resources at their disposal rather than relying solely on digital tools. So, you're right, really trying to have a blended model. I recall, thinking at that October regular meeting, we had some teachers that came from Cedar that talked about that, that really appreciated being able to make those decisions themselves rather than being dictated what type of resources to get. But if you need more information on that, I can let you know.
I remember, I think that, was this the discussion where Mr. Gaston was talking about this? I think he said he would come back, he would give us a date when. Of course, it had to be implemented, but so we, you know, can learn when, you know, maybe next year, I'm sure.
Okay, what is more specific?
In terms of about how, you know, the different technologies were being, are being utilized? More specifically, some examples, highlights?
Okay.
And like how they, how things are being blended, like? And I think, you know, I'm projecting here, so probably I'm out of order, you know? I'm like, are there books, you know, are there other books? But I know that there are books, but, you know, so, and I, I, you know, of course, but yeah, just curious. Other questions? Okay, all in favor of approving the student device purchase for grades five through six and 11 through 12? If you wish, or raising your hand?
That's your answer.
Thank you. All right, that motion carries. We'll move forward, then, I'm sorry, I didn't even check with you to be sure there was no, there were no amendments, that this is really our last item, okay?
So there were no amendments, but we do still have our individual representations to represent the groups that haven't been assigned yet. That's not tonight, we'll do, add that to the agenda at another time. Because we need to replace people that want to go over there and be able to sign this, like envision apps like the Humpville seat. We would not ask to, that has to be next time, perhaps.
Okay.
Unless you found a different way for us to do that.
I can't think of the, the, certainly if...
Yeah, I would suggest that people stay on what they're doing when it's related to being... We need to have a really representative.
Right, that's why I would take vision apps today. I realize you have a second.
And that's why next week, I'm the one to be early on.
Okay, so we will need to make a note to have that on our agenda, to have that as an item. And it can be anywhere, maybe under the president's report or some separate agent.
Now, President, I think I heard tonight that no one has represented Athens Area Community Foundation?
No.
I'm, no, I'm sorry, Dr. Gaston, I'm sorry. That's not the end, I'm sorry, ladies, the foundation, I'm sorry, thank you. The Foundation for Excellence in Public Education. I'll take that one there, we need to come around now. Because I, I think I fell out of the community oversight because of the hours, the meantime.
And we'll, and we'll be able to, and that would be sort of right now and in the future, but within our, with our next meeting, we'll lock all of the appointments. And, okay, we are adjourned then?
Now, President, I believe we adjourn at 9:26 PM.
Second, okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay.